Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Paso Robles City Council for Tuesday, October 18, 2022. Mayor Steve Martin speaking. Before we get started, I'd like to read the following. The city has returned to hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. To participate remotely, residents can listen to the meeting live on the radio at 12:30 a.m. or livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube and call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure the opportunity to comment on each item heard by the council. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: With that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bausch?
President?
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond is not present. Councilmember Strong is not present. Mayor Martin?
And I am here. We have a majority of council members present, so we can commence. First off, we have a closed session scheduled. I will ask the city attorney what items we'll be discussing during that meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we'll be going into closed session on two items. The first is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6, with your city negotiators being Mr. Lewis, the city manager; Mr. Cornell, your administrative services director; and the employee organizations are the International Association of Firefighters, Paso Robles Police Officers Association, Service Employees International Union, Unrepresented Part-Time Employees, and Unrepresented Management Employees. The second item will be conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8. The property is a 5.6 acre portion of APN 008254002, more commonly known as Pioneer Park. And again, your negotiator is city manager Lewis, and the negotiating party for the other side would be the state of California acting by and through the state public board with the consent of the Department of Food and Agriculture acting by and through the 16th District Agricultural Association. And under negotiation are price and terms of payment.
Thank you. There is no one from the public in the room to offer comment. I see no one standing in line online. We will close public comment on the closed session items, and if there's no objection, we will recess to closed session.[181.10][181.10][Music]
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular Pastoral City Council meeting for Tuesday, October the 18th. For those of you listening and watching on YouTube, Mayor Steve Martin speaking. Before we get started, I'd like to read the following: "City has returned to hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. To participate remotely, residents can listen to the meeting live on the radio at 12:00, or livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube, and call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure the opportunity to comment on each item heard by the council. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting, to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting, also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: That will call the meeting to order. I will invite you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Bausch, followed by invocation offered by Pastor Pat Sheehan.
Please face the colors. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to your Republic, which stands one nation, united in her heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings upon Mayor Martin, councilpersons Gregory, Hammond, Bausch, and Strong. Fill them with knowledge and wisdom for every decision before them tonight. And Father, we ask that you bless our law enforcement and emergency services personnel who bravely protect and serve. Grace our city staff with all they need to manage and care for our city. And Father, we thank you for your great love and many blessings poured out upon Pastor Robles, and we ask this in the precious name of your son. Amen.
Amen. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bausch.
President.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye, here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
And Mayor Martin.
Here. All members are present. At this time, we would like to take a few moments for staff introductions. We'll go around the room. If you are an employee of the city or participate in a Citizens Advisory Committee, we invite you to stand. Let us know what you do so we can recognize the work you do for the city. On my right, please.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director.
Melissa Boyer, City Clerk, joined by Shawna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator, and Randall Wright, IT Technician.
Christopher Leckel, Utilities Director.
David Licarle, Interim Public Works Ops Manager.
Deidre Sessparanza, Permanent Capital Policy Engineer.
Hattie Lico-Fortin, Strategic Services Director.
Freda Roman, Government Support Officer.
David Norton.
Frank Raelke, Strategic Services Director.
Office Manager.
Martin Alford, Government Support Officer.
Good evening.
I'm Lewis, Assistant Minister.
Elizabeth Hall, City Attorney.
Thank you. Anyone online?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. We move on now. Prior to the regular meeting of the Pastoral City Council, we had a notice-closed-session meeting, and I will ask the City Attorney if there was any reportable action from that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We went into closed session on two items. The first was conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, and there was no reportable action on that item. On the second item was conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.5 related to a 5.6 acre portion of APN 008-252-002, more commonly known as Pioneer Park. And the reportable action was the council has appointed the mayor, Mr. Martin, and Councilmember Gregory to reach out and potentially meet with the 16th District regarding the price and terms of the sale.
Very good. Thank you. We have several presentations tonight. To start off, I'd like to invite Biz Steinberg to come forward. Welcome.
I missed your tie.
Where did I get it?
Head Start.
We are happy tonight to make proclamation honoring Elizabeth Biz Steinberg for receiving the Lyndon Baines Johnson Leadership Award, October 18th, 2022. Whereas Elizabeth Biz Steinberg received the Lyndon Baines Johnson Leadership Award presented by the National Community Action Partnership, and whereas this award recognizes community action practitioners whose expertise on what works to promote greater economic opportunity for children and families is known and respected at the national, state, and local level. Whereas these practitioners have led their community action agency in connecting a significant number of children and families to greater opportunity, transforming their lives and making their communities a better place to live. Whereas Biz began her career at the Community Action Partnership of San Luis Obispo County, CAPSLO, in 1978 as Head Start Education Coordinator, and then became the Head Start and migrant and seasonal Head Start Director. And since 1984, Biz has served as the agency's chief executive officer. Whereas according to CAPSLO Board Chair D. Lacy, quote, "When Biz sees the need, she cannot turn away because first and foremost, she thinks of the children and families welfare. She has inspired boards of directors for over 44 years to continue to address the causes of poverty and lift up families," unquote. Whereas Biz is known as a passionate advocate for low-income children and families. And whereas Biz promotes advocacy through her participation on numerous national boards and annual meetings with congressional representatives in Washington, DC, and her participation on state and local boards include the Workforce Investment Board, SLO Housing Authority, Children's Services Network, Mission Community Services Corporation, Community Health Centers of the Central Coast, and Sierra Vista Hospital. State and national boards include the CA Family Planning Council, CA Child Development Policy Institute Board, National Head Start Association, National Migrant and Seasonal Head Start Association, and National Community Action Partnership Board. And whereas Biz lives the promise of community action, she helps people change their lives every day, as she says, "One individual, one family at a time." Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize and congratulate Biz Steinberg on receiving the Lyndon Baines Johnson's Leadership Award. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I don't know why I am nervous right now, but I'm very grateful to be receiving this proclamation in my home county by the Pastor Robles City Council, who has served over time for many, many years when it is their turn. So Mayor Martin served on the board of CAPSLO with D. Lacy our board president. So Mayor Martin served on the board of CAPSLO with D. Lacy, our board president is here. Maria Garcia was our last person, and the seat now shifts to the City of Atascadero. So being here in our local community to receive this means so much because everything we're all working together on between community action, nonprofits, cities, the county service groups, volunteers, happens locally. That's where we help people, and that's where they make progress and want to hope for their dreams coming true someday. So I just today, up in this area, Marcy, who's here, we visited our Adult Day program. We thank the council for your support with funding for our Adult Day elders who may have dementia and Alzheimer's. They were just thrilled to have visitors. We were over at the new office in the Alliance little business park, I guess you'd call it, where we are helping our veterans from the North County. If you know veterans, please call. You will get great service from our staff. And then we ended at three of the Head Start Centers located right here in Passerobles. Got to go by that new, well, relatively new park, the Uptown Park. So I've taken enough time, but I just want you to know that this whole county is connected. We're also connected to other areas that have asked CAPSLO to bring programs of high quality to serve their vulnerable communities too. Thank you for all the support you have given to our homeless families and individuals, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the City of Passerobles. Thank you.
Here's a familiar name, Julie Dahlin. Mr. Lewis, you going to be a part of this? Come on up. We're just recognizing you all over the place, aren't we? Certificate of recognition presented to Julie Dahlin. California Parks and Recreation Services 2022 Professional Award of Excellence Fellowship, District 8 Hall of Fame. In appreciation for dedicated service to the City of Passerobles and to recognize you for being awarded the CPRS District 8 Fellowship, District 8 Hall of Fame Professional Award of Excellence, District 8's highest honor, this award recognizes individuals who have significantly contributed to and influenced CPRS and the parks and recreation profession throughout their career. We congratulate you on this extraordinary honor again.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and council, for recognizing this honor that was a big surprise to me. It's always gratifying to be recognized by your peers, so thank you, CPRS. Thank you for the sneaky recreation staff who nominated me for this award, and I had no idea. You have all made a very delicious retirement, even sweeter, so thank you so very much.
Chris, we have a certificate of recognition for you presented to the Passerobles REC Foundation. California Parks and Recreation Services 2022 Service Award of Excellence, Champion of the Community. In appreciation for dedicated service to the City of Passerobles and to recognize the Passerobles REC Foundation for being awarded the CPRS District 8 Champion of the Community Service Award of Excellence, an award that recognizes organizations that have contributed significant effort to influence and improve the quality of their community through parks and recreation. We congratulate you on this extraordinary honor. Thanks for all your work.
I wish I could take all the credit, but of course, I'm just the chairman, the chairman of REC Foundation. You know, REC Foundation is honored to accept this recognition, not only from the city but from CPRS. I brought the certificate, actually. It was a really fun award ceremony that they had recently. But since 2000, REC Foundation has worked closely with the City of Passerobles and Recreation Services, including Julie, for so many years. Thank you, Julie, for all of your counsel and advice over the years. Much appreciated, and great award to you as well. But we've worked with the city for so many years to influence and improve the quality of life in our city through recreational opportunities, of course. We focus on people, places, and programming, always striving to make things better. We're a small but mighty board of directors. We do have one of our board, our actual vice chairman, Cindy Pop, in the audience. Cindy? And so we are, but invested though, so much into our community through time, through our families, through our children, participating in programming, which we also feel is so important, just to be a part of it ourselves. But then also our own places of business, and then our own recreational activities, participating in city programming and in what the city has to provide. This award recognizes the good work of REC Foundation and its board of directors now and in the past, who want to see a better quality of life for our community. Over the years, this group has been the primary sponsor for 21 seasons of Concerts in the Park, which provides support for youth scholarships in our community to be able to participate, of course, in so much of the recreational programming that exists here. REC Foundation has also supported many playground improvement projects, manages two endowments, one for the River Trail, and then the other one for our park jewel, Barney Schwartz Park, where currently we are moving forward to complete the complete funding of the new pump track that we have going on out there. And so REC Foundation is completely funding that project, by the way. So we're excited to bring new and fun opportunities in the world of recreation to our community and to the youth here. And that's a need that was identified and that we are fulfilling. So we will continue to work with the City of Passerobles and Recreation Services to improve the quality of recreation in our community, and thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Thank you, council.
I'm going to give this a try and apologize in advance if I get it wrong. Lisa Clokenager?
Yeah.
Is that Clokenager? Come on up. We'll bring them with you. Welcome. So let's make sure everyone knows who you are.
Okay, I'm Lisa Clokenager. Julia Cuccinella.
Anna Garcia Brady.
Excellent. We have a proclamation of Dental Health Month, October 2022. Whereas good dental health immeasurably improves the quality of life we enjoy, and more people are experiencing better dental health than ever before because of advancements in dental health services. Whereas dental hygienists as preventative specialists contribute to the oral health of the residents of the City of Passerobles and provide essential services contributing to oral health. Whereas dental hygienists voluntarily give of their time and effort in providing educational and preventative oral health care services to special needs groups such as the elderly, mentally and physically disabled, the underprivileged, and children. And whereas these services are essential in the dental office, public health facilities, schools, private organizations, and research facilities to provide the best possible health care to all citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Dental Health Month in the City of Paso Robles. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. We are all three registered dental hygienists in alternative practice. You've probably not heard much about the AP hygienist. We came about in the early 2000s. We have our own private practices. We do not have a dentist in the practice, but however, we do refer to dentists. We can assess problems in a patient's mouth, and we are the bridge between the dental office and a dental hygienist. So we can see people and take X-rays, and again, assess problems. And we go out into nursing homes, private homes for people that might be bedridden. And we are licensed in the state of California to be private practitioners who also accept insurances. So we have been doing this now, I have, for 18 years in California, in the little town of Passerobles. I was the first to open such an office in 2004, and I've seen over 4,000 people here at my office.
Julia? Hi, I'm Julia Cuccinella, and I have been working in the same building with Lisa. She's been, she was kind enough to bring me on over 11 years ago, so I've been doing the same thing. And so yes, we can go out into people's homes and into nursing homes, and we can see special needs people. That's kind of our special little niche there. But we also have a brick and mortar building, so anyone can come in and see us there. So I just like to thank the City of Passerobles, and they have been embracing of small businesses, and we're really, really thankful for that, and our business especially. And I'd like to introduce Anna, who's joined us recently.
My name is Anna Garcia Brady, and I am the newbie here, but I'm very excited to come and join him. And we are open, and we're very thankful for this amazing recognition for Lisa, which has been doing this for so long for all our patients and the community. So thank you so much, and maybe we'll see you in our office one day.
Next on our agenda, we have our Capitol Projects Report. Freda Berman and Deidre S. Esperanza.
I'll start off. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So the first project I want to discuss is our Golden Hill Union Road Roundabout, which is progressing rather well. We're entering into the fourth month of construction. I just want, again, to reiterate, there are only two detour routes that are sanctioned by the City of Passerobles that we would like everybody to use. This one is the west detour route. Again, if you're going to go west, go down Union or Creston, go north on North River Road. That will take you to the north side of Highway 46. And then the east detour route is to go east on Ardmore Road, which now connects to Union, and then go to east to the county, and then coming from the county, go west on Union Road to a bypass road that makes the turn on Golden Hill, and then you can make the turn left, the left turn at the safe traffic signal at Highway 46. The access, the signs that says, here's the access to Bronco Burgers and Coffee and Car Wash are only to be used by the customers. Please don't use their driveway as a detour route. The same with Enterprise Rental Car. The Medical Plaza again is, they have two driveways. Unfortunately, I mean, those driveways are only for their customers. Please refrain from using them as a through route. There's a road there that's been constructed that you can use to go to Golden Hill Road. The residential roads around the neighborhood is also for residents only. Please do not use them as a detour route. If you do, there is a radar trailer there that clocks what speed you're going. The cops are giving out tickets, so make sure you only drive 25 miles per hour. But let's move on to construction. So there's 12-inch and 16-inch ductile iron pipes are now complete. Here's some pictures of them. Sewer mains and drop manholes are also complete. The sewer main was deep, that's why we had to put in a drop manhole. The pipe on the right side of the screen is actually the main that drops into the bottom of the manhole. That's why it's called a drop manhole. The irrigation sleeves have been constructed as well, and the streetlight conduits and the signal lights, sorry, streetlight pole foundations are also complete. So all in all, the undergrounds are just about done. And so the next step is now for the contractor to start grading the road. And in a few weeks, there'll be curbs and gutters that are going to be poured, sidewalks that are going to be poured, and you're going to start to see the actual geometry of the roundabout that will be happening in the next few weeks. So it's getting quite exciting. We're also doing a project of road repairs in the Appaloosa neighborhood and the West Melody Drive. Girl Street names, all the, that's the name of the list of the streets. All the curb ramps have been installed, so the next phase is to do localized dig-out repairs. You can see the markings of where the dig-out repairs ought to take place, so that'll be happening in the next few weeks. So we had our annual pavement striping refreshment project. Here's the list of the streets. Niblick, Spring to South River, 13th Riverside to South River, Charley, Creston to South River, and Creston Meadow Lock to City Limits. The work has been occurring at night, so you probably haven't seen any construction. We haven't received any complaints of traffic, which is a good thing. And then when you wake up in the morning, voila, it's done. So here's Niblick Road and Bridge is completed. And then just last night, they finished the 13th Street Bridge, that's why I don't have pictures yet. And then finally, upcoming road project is the Country Club Neighborhood. We issued the notice to proceed last week, so the contractor is mobilizing. He'll start with the concrete, again, it starts with, there's no undergrounds on this one, which is a good thing, so that saves us one task. So he'll go directly into the concrete and then to dig outs and then a final paving.
Can I ask a question real quick? Deidre, yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Exactly what is going to be in that? Are they completely removing the asphalt and then compacting, then bringing it back up?
Yeah, it's grind and overlay. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, those roads really need a lot of help. And I think that's it for now. So I'll pass it on, unless you have other questions, I'll pass it on to David Licarle.
Okay, any other questions from council? This is an information item. No action is required tonight. Thank you, Deidre.
Good evening. I'm back again with another update for Centennial Creek, if anybody's been or had the chance to take a look at it. Centennial Creek Rehabilitation Project. The western portion from Niblick down to Navajo is now open, safe to the public and pedestrians for usage. So that is now open and good. We don't have any big trucks going through there. But I'm excited to say that it's now officially open and safe for pedestrian usage. What we've done, and I'll show you a couple slides here briefly. You can see that the culvert, we've done a lot of maintenance on removing some of that vegetation in anticipation for the wet season, making sure that we are ensuring proper flow goes right through there. As you, if you get a chance, either riding bike, walking, walking your dog, you'll probably see these roughen riffles, and if you'll remember, they're essentially these cobbled beds to emulate more of a natural stream corridor. So we have 15 of these along the corridor. You'll also see some erosion and sediment controls that are installed. You'll see here that we have a straw wattle. They're strategically placed and pinned down so as to eliminate any sediment going into the drainage as we, again, move into the wet season. Not to get too far, but here's kind of a cool shot. You'll see all three of the measures that we've implemented. On the left slide, you'll see a secondary channel that is lined with erosion blanket. You'll also see these straw wattles, again, just holding down some of the top of the bank. And then, of course, you have the roughen riffle, as I was saying before. This slide on the right, I have, again, 15 roughen riffles that are installed. But what I wanted to show in this slide here is that while we went through and did a little bit of trimming on some of the oats, we also did some chipping. And so some of this chipping and mulching, we wanted to put on the banks for stabilization. Again, this is another erosion control method as we're moving into the winter period. So I do have next steps, and I guess I kind of jumped the gun because the trail is officially open, so that's done with. But what is exciting is that in November 13th, we will begin to do some planting. So we have one gallon plants that will be strategically placed per our planting plan. We'll also be doing some native seed broadcasting throughout that corridor. So we'll start to see some beautification of planting down there, so you're not going to see some open bare soils. And certainly it's timed correctly so that when we do start to get rains, start to get a little bit moisture, that's going to help the establishment of those seeds. you start to get a little bit moisture, that's going to help the establishment of those seeds and the one gallon plants as well. The bollards, which are those metal poles that protect the entrance of these trails, were removed so that we can get some of the heavy equipment in and out. They're removed. We're actually going to be looking at replacing those with new bollards after we get all the plantings done. So that'll, that'll, that'll occur late November, most likely in December. And then just looking off into the future here in 2023, in July, we'll be beginning the east side of the portion of the project, which will essentially be Nickerson all the way to Lana. So we'll be seeing a lot of the same types of measures, roughen riffles, erosion control, secondary channels. And so that will begin pretty much with the end of school so as not to disturb kids going to and from their homes to schools. And so we tried to schedule it the best we could to, to eliminate as much disturbance. That's all I have for this update. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Council questions?
Yes, sir.
There we go. Thank you very much. It was a great presentation. The consumables, like the, the wattles, how often will those be replaced?
Well, until we start to see some plant establishment. Once we get some bank stabilization with some of the grasses and native plants and some of those one gallon plants, we'll likely remove those. So as
Perfect.
We just kind of keep all that stuff buttoned up. So we're not introducing any more soil into the
So they're not just going to lay there forever and decompose?
That's not the plan.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to forget Councilman Strong. He's with us telephonically. Fred, do you have any questions on that part of the presentation?
No questions this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello. I am going to conclude the Public Works presentation with first Fire Station 3. If you've driven by, you can see that we have a real fire station at this point. We are on schedule and should be complete in early summer of 2023. Currently, they're roughing in mechanical and electrical and fire protection systems. And next up will be site fencing, some sidewalk work, hollow metal door install, and flashing and building paper install as well. So we're well on the way to a beautiful new fire station. Next up is the Uptown Family Park Water Feature. I believe last, at last meeting, I mentioned that these bids came in super high and we would have to value engineer the project to continue with it. It is a State of California grant funded project. The good news is we have found a way to continue with the project. We will still be installing the misting feature. I'm awaiting the revised plans from the architect and we will be moving forward. So this project is still on the books and good to go. The Centennial Park Patio Shade Sale Project, those bids open this Thursday. So we already have the shade sale in our maintenance yard. And as soon as those bids open and contracts are finalized, the folks in Recreation at Centennial Park will have a whole new venue for their programming on the patio. In Design is the Pickleball Court Complex. We have about three weeks to go until submission of the 50% construction drawings to the Building Department. Right now, they're doing civil engineering, electrical engineering, and geotechnical work. So we're, we're getting there. It is a big project. We want to make sure that all the details are covered. But in, in about three weeks, Building Department will get their first look at those plans. The law enforcement facilities at 4305 Second Win Way. As with any law enforcement facility, there are a lot of technicalities that need to be confirmed. We are still in that process. And then it will go to the Building Department. And finally, Chris Toronto with Rec Foundation mentioned the pump track. I want to give them even more credit. They, he didn't mention this is a half million dollar investment by Rec Foundation into Barney Schwartz Park for the construction of the pump track. We just received the second plan check comments from the Building Department, returned to the architect, and we'll have a, a full complete set to bid out the first week in November. So moving forward on that project as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Council questions? Anyone? Mr. Strong?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. This is information only, no action is required. That being said, if there's anyone in the room that has a question about that presentation, I'd invite you to come forward and we'll give you three minutes to ask it. Welcome.
Hi, Chris Toronto, Rec Foundation. Do we still say 549 Rose Lane and all that stuff? Do we do that? All right, cool. Just a question about Centennial Park Trail and the asphalt that extends the trail primarily during, over there by the switchbacks that are behind or by the tennis courts. There's a lot of erosion that's happening there. And you can see the trail is little by little, kind of the, the, the actual path is little by little kind of falling away. I wonder if there are plans on replacing the asphalt, not only there, but I suppose the entire length of the Centennial Park Trail? Because I would think that would be something of an improvement. That would be great to see, especially seeing how it's kind of falling apart there behind the tennis courts.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who has a question or a comment? Okay, could we get a quick answer to that one, Frida?
The quick answer is absolutely yes. In this year's fiscal, approved fiscal year budget, we have money to repair that asphalt. So it'll be happening in the next few months.
Thank you. And thank you for the reports. Moving on now to general public comments. This is the time the public may address the council on items within the council's purview, but not scheduled on the agenda tonight. All persons desiring to speak on an agenda item are asked to fill out speaker information cards, give them to the city clerk prior to speaking. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes per item. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being discussed. State law does not allow the council to discuss or take action on issues not on the agenda, except that members of the council or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights. With that, we'll open general public comments and invite you to the microphone. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Sherry Nelson, 70-year Paso Robles resident and, and third generation. I am degreed and certified in the field of physical and psychological health. I currently work in the field of neuropsychology, and I have over 30-year history of health and science research and, and consulting. I'm here tonight to speak about the retail pot stores, which is not on the agenda tonight. And I do have some specific questions and some concerns. I absolutely oppose any pot marijuana retail stores in the City of Paso. And my specific question is regarding the, what was suggested that 10% of the cut of the intake of these sales, in addition to the sales tax. One possibility in the questionnaire that I filled out is going to, would be, go to mitigate for mental health. Is that, so that's my understanding. I'm very concerned about that as mental health being such a broad term. Due to my experience and extensive background in this field, I want to bring to the attention of the council that's going to be making decision on this if unfortunately it does move forward. So as to the money going to quote, "mental health", I want to bring the following to your attention. If that happens to be so, I would ask for specifics. Exactly which programs would that money go to as far as quote, "mental health"? And I would ask that these programs show that they have a history of a success rate. I would like to see 50% success rate and a five-year history of being successful. Because I hear so much, let's give money to mental health. Let's give money to mental health. It gives us a warm and fuzzy feeling. But I can tell you, and I've got references here, that our mental health system is in a disaster. Mad in America by Robert Whitaker is an expose of this, what I'm speaking of. It's called Mad in America by Robert Whitaker, Bad Science, Bad Medicine, and Enduring Mistreatment of the Mentally Ill. It's a complete expose of how this is a disaster and what's been happening, happening to our people. They also have a website for people interested in it. So everything is cause and effect. If we continue to pour money into the effects without looking at the cause, it is a waste of taxpayer money and it is irresponsible. As to the cause of the ever increasing homelessness and mental health issues, I have talked to many experts in here locally that work with homeless. And 80% is due to drug and alcohol addiction. So we're just going to add to that. Also, I understand the time is up and I'll be very brief here. Article in the Telegram Tribune recently from a grand jury expose hospital ER frontline of mental health care. Quotes from the CEO Mark Lisa of Twin and Dr. Cinnamon Reed. They, they don't have enough beds to deal with the psych beds right now. They are overwhelmed. Mark Lisa said he's never seen anything like it at any other hospital in this county.
I'm going to ask you to summarize, please. That's what I'll pass through.
So please, when you consider this, and I'm available for anyone who would like more information on this because there's a lot more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
Good morning or afternoon, excuse me, Dan Augustine, 5770 Vista Serrano Way. It's addressed in Paso Robles, but it's outside of city limits. However, part of my concern is about the parking. But before I address that, I got to tell you, I first met Biz Steinbeck when we formed the United Way in this county. What a gal. And she has done a lot more than just what you gave her credit for tonight, I'll tell you. And on the Parks and Recs, I've attended a seminar at Hearst Castle, believe it or not, regarding Parks and Recs. You know what they found? Where cities have a good Parks and Recreation Program, the amount of gangs is very less, much less. Now on the parking, I just have two suggestions. Let's reform the parking commission. And let's open up the first three hours to free. That's my suggestions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Good evening.
Yeah, hi, Jeff Carr, Paso Robles. The new Slope County Animal Shelter opened last month. I've been there for visits. Very nice, nice building. There was an opening ceremony. From what I saw on the press, there were, I didn't see any representatives from City of Paso Robles there. I thought that was curious. Because the City of Paso Robles is the highest city contributor towards the building of that shelter. And it's also the largest city user of animal services in the county. Though implementations were needed at the old shelter, there was controversy over the building of the new one. But in the end, I understood the mayor talked of the, of the county and the city being better partners with respect to animal services. And then in the 2019 contract for animal services, it was promised that policy setting and procedure development will occur in a collaborative manner. There were to be regular meetings to discuss issues and other items related to the shelter construction and animal services. There was a commitment to a goal of reducing animal intakes and total animal nights by an average of 5% per year over the next five years, all in an attempt to reduce service fees. The city also expected updates to the county's animal control ordinances aimed at streamlining processes. Yet since then, I've heard nothing about the progress towards these goals. Can a city possibly elaborate on that progress at some point? And by the way, that last contract I'm speaking of expired on June 30th. I'm still wondering, has that been renewed? I couldn't find any reference to it on the website. So I'd like to know what's going on with that. During the COVID pandemic, animal intakes had decreased throughout the country as people sought the comfort of pets during the shutdowns. Sadly, intakes have rebound sharply as people have gone back to work or rising rents have caused people housing problems with respect to their pets. One aspect where I feel the city could do a much better job is with respect to this communication and with respect to municipal code 8.04.60, Poundmaster Reports. The Poundmaster shall make a monthly report to the city council or as often as may be required by the city of the actions, transaction, and operations of the public pound. Poundmaster here refers to the Chief Animal Control Officer at Slope County. I've never heard a single monthly report ever made to the city council on this item. So I, and I brought this to the attention more than once in the past. In my view, the city council and the public need regular reports to show that the city is adequately meeting its animal control requirements and adequately monitoring county shelter services with respect to cost and performance. The contract requires the county to develop performance benchmarks and communicate them quarterly to what's called an Animal Care and Control Coordination Group, which I believe Paso is a member. That information should be included in the reports. Though they often fail to provide timely updates, the county also posts statistics related to their operations that should be of interest to the city council and the public as it indicates opportunity for improvement related to animal control services. For example, license compliance in the City of Paso Robles is estimated typically at approximately 30%. That's pretty bad. Have we tried anything to improve that? Yes. I believe there's a quarterly payment to animal services of over 91,000 in tonight's warrant register. Perhaps Poundmaster Reports could be presented in conjunction with these service payments that we're making. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Monty Jones, resident Paso Robles, business owner. I spoke the last couple of times on some of the quality of life, life issues and what I believe to be some of the mismanagement, not mismanagement, but you know, lack of attention on some of the quality of life issues in town. What I've noticed is that after my comments, it doesn't seem like the council is asking the right questions of the staff to get these answers and whether, I don't know why. So I guess it'll take some time to ask the right questions here. Yesterday or last time I mentioned, um, streetlights on Pine, but also that there was a house taken over violently, a vacant house violently by some homeless, drug addicts, not sure what to call them. This was in your district, John? One block from the police station. So I'll ask Chief, was there any arrests?
Please address your comments for the council, sir.
Okay, so maybe you can follow up with the chief. Were there any arrests in the house that terrorized families for weeks? I, I don't know. Still, still boarded up. Doesn't seem like anything's been done about it. I mentioned it costs $60,000 minimum in permits for affordable housing in this town. Sherman mentioned that they, you did 250 to 350 building permits in, last year. So my question would be, how many of those were for multifamily? And how many of those were for small, just basic apartments for our young hospitality staff that have nowhere to live? They're living five in a house. It's absurd. And they're paying 20, anyone that wants to build is 25% of your building cost is now in just fees and hookups, just for a basic duplex. Talk about, mentioned, you know, the Ford capital outlays, $19 million for the airport spaceport program. Mr. Lewis mentioned, well, Cal Poly's paying for everything except $100,000. Well, that's true for the permit, but not for the capital outlays, which in this budget, surprise, there's 1.9, or excuse me, 1.8 million more than the previous budget for the spaceport. Instead, our roads are, our roads are in disrepair. We can't strike crosswalks in school zones. We can't build sidewalks. So it's, rent's doubled essentially in this town for young people that we're expecting to staff our hotels that we're building, our wineries, our industry. I just urge you guys to, you're the, you're the, the men and women in the breach against the temper, the excitable urges of the staff in the city to spend and spend and spend without addressing some of the quality of life issues that the people of this town are really seeing now. The gentleman in the wheelchair in the park's been there for three months now. I mean, it's, it's cruel and inhumane to, to let someone in a wheelchair without legs to live in the park for three months. Is there a plan for this? I haven't seen one. I've reached out to the Echo Center. That man can't do anything. He's reached out to him, but he can't force him to do anything. And this man does not belong to be in jail. But something should be done for humanity, for his humanity. It's insane. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else, anyone else who would like to speak? I see no one waiting online. We'll close general public comment. We've got several questions here. Let's see if we can address some of them. Mr. Lewis, there was a question about utilization of potential fees that might be generated beyond sales tax from brick and mortar stores for cannabis products. I don't think we've reached the point where we've actually identified that. We haven't even established the framework. But if you could give, give us a perspective on that.
Yeah, my understanding, I'm surmising that the commenter was referring to when the city council elected to place before the voters the, the 10% or the, the, excuse me, the tax on cannabis in addition to the sales. the, uh, the ten percent or the, uh, excuse me, the tax on cannabis in addition to the sales tax, that those were some of the items that council would be able to use that money for. The fact is that if any revenue that comes in from an additional tax imposed by the city would be used for general fund purposes unless further restricted by the council.
Thank you. And then I would assume that we ever did get to the point where we were trying to direct that money towards mental health services. We would draw up an RFP which required strict requirements for performance. We wouldn't just be handing out checks to folks.
Yes, part of our decision-making process, of course, would be to make sure that whatever services we retain were effective and reviewed.
Thank you. Another question, with several questions about the animal shelter situation. Do we get progress reports towards the goals of the animal shelter operation?
We do. The, uh, the police department is in charge of managing the contract with animal services since their dispatch center usually fields the majority of those calls and works hand-in-hand with enforcement items as well. So Mr. Carr is more than welcome to, A, reach out to the county directly, who is the source of any reporting that he would like. I believe he's very familiar with being able to file any kind of Information Act reports to get reports directly from them since we don't generate them. But any information that we do have that might be helpful to him, I can place him in contact with Chief Nord to be able to get that information.
And what level of collaborative planning has occurred between the county and the city as far as implementation of animal services?
So I, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you're well aware that we've been, we went through extensive negotiations with the county when it came to deciding whether or not the city wanted to pursue its own animal shelter or not. Ultimately, I, the council determined that it was in the city's best interest to partner with the county and other municipalities to share expenses related to animal control services. That was a very collaborative process. And as the need arises, we do reach out to them regularly. They have a very open communication style with the city.
Okay, perhaps for the benefit of the public, at some time in the future, we could have a summary of animal services activity when the city may be a trending report of whether they're up or down, so we get an idea of what type of utilization we're making.
You bet. At the council's direction, we can either invite the county to report directly about it and provide a presentation to the community regarding what the new animal services building looks like, the services they provide, and then use statistics here in the city. I can tell you that, you know, we're a very busy community, so I would expect those numbers to reflect the same in the animal control services provided.
Sure. And there was a question about the status of the agreement between the city and the county. It's been renewed and current?
I would have to look at the most recent contract on that. I don't recall off the top of my head when it expires or when it was renewed, but we can get that information.
Okay, and anyone who's interested could inquire either of anyone on the council or of staff directly for that information.
You bet. I would direct everybody to the police department when it comes to animal services questions as relates to the city's management of the contract. Otherwise, the, again, animal control, animal services is the keeper of information regarding statistics. So that's probably the, the purest source to get the information.
Very good. Thank you. There were questions asked regarding streetlights and housing stats. Mr. Fraze, I'm assuming the public contacts you, you have the stats on, on the housing information, the percentages of housing that is being built and levels that are being planned that could be distributed.
Yes, we have public information available. The majority of those units actually are multifamily units. We have the two hundred unit apartment complex on Creston Road. And then the accessory dwelling units, we've seen significant numbers of those built recently. So most of the permits we actually are issuing are for multifamily and infill housing.
And the concerns regarding the location and condition of streetlights, who would that go to?
Public Works would probably be the lead.
Public Works referral, okay. And again, if there's any difficulty with that, anybody sitting up here would be happy to help facilitate that conversation. Chief Nord, you want to come up and make a comment about drug houses? How you're alerted to them and what you do about them?
Mr. Mayor, Council, referring to the actual home he's speaking of, I went back the next day and spoke to my staff. They actually found the home he was, I believe he was speaking of. We went there that day. We've went there more than once since the last meeting. We have not found anyone in the house when we have arrived. Whenever there is, we get constant tips from the public, both anonymous and phone calls. Any tip that comes in, we look into that. You know, there's, there's obviously always tips. There's some people are just mad at their neighbors. There's other, there's actually foundation behind them. We look into every one of those, you know, but there has to be evidence. We have to find, you know, proof of wrongdoing. We, we have to go through all the steps that we have to go through. We can't just show up and just assume someone is, you know, under the influence or using drugs or has drugs. We have to have probable cause to search people. We have to have probable cause to enter a house. We have to have probable cause to stop a car. You know, there's a very long process that goes into some of this. But the house in question, we have looked at. We're attempting to locate the actual owners to see what we can do, working with other city staff to also, you know, what we can do with that house.
Very good. Thank you. And then on the previous subject, I did receive an invitation to the opening of the animal shelter. I had a scheduling conflict and couldn't make it, so I apologize for that. Okay, we're moving on now. I'll ask city manager if we have any agenda items to be deferred.
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We come now to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from the calendar. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar unless an item is pulled for separate consideration. Items pulled from consent are to be heard at the end of the meeting. That being said, do we have any comments, questions from council, any items to be pulled? Mr. Bausch?
I'd like to pull items sixteen and seventeen, please.
Item sixteen and seventeen. Anyone else?
I was going to do the same, so that's, that's it.
Anyone in the community has a quick comment or a question or would like to have an item removed from consent? Okay, we've got another sixteen. Yes, sir. Number eleven. Yes, any, yes. Got it. Very good. Mr. Strong, do you have any questions or comments about the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Thank you. So we are pulling eleven, sixteen, and seventeen. If there's no further discussion from the council or the community, I'll ask for a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Motion to approve items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Bausch, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
And Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. For those who are just tuning in, for those of you who have not taken advantage of the city's website to read the staff reports on tonight's agenda, I'll ask the city manager to give us a quick report on the actions taken under consent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is approval of the October fourth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Next item is receipt of the advisory body minutes for the Library Board of Trustees on September eighth. The next item is receipt of the warrant register. Next item is reaffirmation of the resolution twenty-one one forty-seven approving remote and/or hybrid remote and in-person public meetings as needed pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one. Item number ten is the approval of the twenty twenty-three city council meeting minutes. Excuse me, I did not bring my glasses, so I'm trying to focus. Approval of those city council meeting minutes. The next item is pulled. Item number twelve is the second reading and adoption of ordinance eleven twenty-four authorizing the levy of special taxes within community facilities district number twenty, twenty-two dash three, which is Beechwood Services. Item thirteen is the approval of the purchase of illuminated street signs and traffic signs. Item fourteen is approval of an airport lease agreement with Trianna Winery and Airport RV and Boat Storage. Item fifteen is approval of the addition of Corey Pereira to the city count, to the city's International Society of Arbicultural Certified Arborists List. And then items sixteen and seventeen have been pulled for discussion.
Thank you very much. We have no public, I'm sorry, Mr. Bausch?
Quick clarification on item ten.
Item ten?
I think, uh, the city manager said council meeting minutes.
The schedule. My apology.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. We have a discussion item, number eighteen, public process to adjust to water rates. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Kirk Gonzalez, our water utility engineer, will be leading the discussion of this item with Alex Handlers, our water rate consultant with Bartle Wells Associates.
Thank you, Christopher. Good evening, Mayor Martin, members of the city council. I'm Kirk Gonzalez, your Water Resources Manager, and I'm pleased to be here this evening presenting item eighteen pertaining to the public process for adjusting our water rates. Earlier this year, the city contracted with Bartle Wells and Associates, a consulting firm with expertise in public utility rates and finance, to prepare a new water rate study. Water rate studies are typically prepared every five to six years to project the water enterprise fund's expenses, evaluate the sufficiency of our current water user rates, and to provide an overall financial forecast of the fund. The new water rate study, which is included in the city council's agenda packet, was completed earlier this month and staff has asked the city council to consider the findings and recommendations detailed in the study. And we're recommending that city council now authorize staff to begin the public process for making adjustments to our water rates. The city council would not be making any changes to our rates this evening, only beginning the public process or Proposition two eighteen process needed to adjust rates. Alex Handlers with Bartle Wells is here. He's going to provide a detailed presentation on our water rate study, including key findings and recommendations from the study. But before getting into his presentation, I'd like to just acknowledge a few things for meeting attendees and our listening audience. First of all, the water rate study we're discussing this evening pertains only to our water enterprise fund. It's a financially independent enterprise that's distinct from the city's wastewater enterprise fund and the city's general fund. And we're responsible for operating, maintaining, and renewing our water system infrastructure to ensure that we could continue to safely and reliably provide potable water for our customers. The fund's also responsible for regulatory compliance, providing customer assistance, meeting debt obligations associated with our major infrastructure projects over the past few years and related activities. It's important to acknowledge that the primary source of revenue for the water fund comes from water rates, so it's crucial that our water rates are maintained at sufficient levels to support department operations, renewal of our public assets, and our debt obligations. The new water rate study recommends modest increases in our water rates over the next five years necessary to generate sufficient revenue to cover our forecasted expense, including inflation costs. And our recommended rates would increase our rate revenue by five percent each year over the next five years. Also, because the majority of the water fund's expenses are fixed and do not decrease with reductions in water use, the study also recommends some changes to the fixed components of our water rates, which will greatly improve revenue stability for our water fund, especially during times of mandated water conservation and cutbacks, and will bring our rates more in line with providing the actual cost of service and also with industry norms and guidelines. Recommended rates were developed with input from finance staff, department staff, executives, and city council. And by making increases gradually and relying on some water fund reserves or a portion of them, we've been able to avoid some drastic increases in our water rates. And this, you know, proposed set of water rates really balances the need for increasing our rates and achieving some revenue stability without really impacting our rate payer significantly. So that was an overview. And with that, I'd like to turn it over now to Alex Handlers.
Thank you, and nice to see everybody. And Kirk just covered a lot of key points, so I'll try to walk through this pretty quickly. But we do have a presentation to present the findings and recommendations of the rate study. For this presentation, I was going to cover a little bit of the background about the water system rates and finances and explain the recommendations. And then, you know, the key here, again, as Kirk mentioned, is to review the recommendations and get authorization to proceed with the process. So no action on rates being taken tonight. As far as the background, it was just mentioned, your water enterprise is self-supporting. The rates are the main source of revenue, so you've got to keep the rates at adequate levels. They really underpin the financial stewardship of everything you do on the water enterprise. You've got about ten thousand five hundred accounts, ninety percent roughly are residential. You've got a lot of infrastructure out there, over a hundred seventy-five miles of pipelines that need to be maintained, repaired, and replaced. A lot of those pipelines have been in the ground for many years and need to be reinvested in over time. And there's some good news also on your water supply front. Historically, your water supply was from groundwater, but you're in a basin that's been identified as critically overdrafted. But I think this is a real big accomplishment for the city, getting the Naciviano Water Project completed for an alternative source of supply that's a lot more reliable and giving you adequate supply for your customers now and into the future. So big accomplishment there. When we look back at your water rates, we see that the city, from my perspective, and I've worked with over a hundred fifty agencies, you've done a very good job with the financial stewardship by gradually raising rates most years over the past ten years. There was no rate increase last year, but before that, you'd been staying on top of your finances, which is very nice to see, to keep your enterprise in good shape. In terms of your water rate structure, there are two components to your water rates. You've got a fixed charge, ten dollars per month that people pay regardless of use, regardless of customer size. Plus, there's a usage rate of six dollars and fifty-six cents per unit. And your units are measured in hundred cubic feet. Most people don't naturally think in terms of hundred cubic feet, but a hundred cubic feet is about seven hundred forty-eight gallons. So in terms of cents per gallon or cents per hundred gallons, your rate works out to be eighty-eight cents per hundred gallons or a little less than nine tenths of a cent per gallon on the volumetric side. As Kirk mentioned, this also, you have low fixed charges compared to most agencies out there and compared to industry standards. And overall, your residential bills are in the lower-middle range compared to a survey we did from eighteen surrounding agencies. I'm going to show you results of those surveys for, for bills at different levels of use. From my perspective, these are the only background information. Every agency has to fund its own cost of service, so this is just more for comparative purposes. But this first chart compares a rate payer using five units per month. You've got about twenty-five percent of your bills up to this level. And you can see with the blue arrow pointing there, the city's charges are on the lower range compared to the surrounding eighteen agencies. This chart here shows for a typical residential user that uses about ten units per month. About fifty-four percent of your residential bills are at or below this level of use. And one thing I forgot to mention on the chart is the chart has two colors. The lower darker section shows the fixed charges paid each month. And the lighter section on top shows the volumetric charges. And you can see your, your fixed charges are the lowest out there. I'll show those in a minute. And here's the same chart for about a customer using fifteen units. It's about seventy-five percent of the bills are through this level. So only the top twenty-five percent of bills are higher. Again, this one, you're right in the middle of the range. But what I did want to show importantly and highlight is this chart here. This is just breaking out the fixed charges only. And you can see your fixed charges are the lowest of the eighteen agencies out there. They're, they're a lot lower than what the fixed costs of service are. And also with your fixed charges, you're one of very few agencies out there in California that doesn't charge fixed charges that are based on meter size, where large customers pay more in proportion to the, the higher capacity they need in the system. So that's a little background on the water rates. For our study, there's really two components that I think of when we do a rate study. One is developing a ten-year financial plan to, you know, look at the long term and identify what are the future funding needs are and what rate increases you need to get there. And we also did an evaluation of the rate structure. And as was mentioned, the good news is you're starting off in a good position. However, you are facing some financial challenges, so gradual rate increases will be needed in future years. And what others, what are those financial challenges? One is the, the capital improvements. You just completed a water master plan that was an independent engineering evaluation of your water system. And it identifies a lot of projects over the next thirty years. The capital program includes about twenty million of projects, a little more than that, over the first five years to address some of the most high priority needs. So that's a big portion of why rates need to increase to generate a lot of funding or more funding for your capital program. You also have some new debt payments that are going to be hitting the water enterprise related to the San Antonio Dam spillway repair. These are contractually required payments the city makes as part of its Naciviano Water Project. You also have some additional staffing needs. In addition to your staff handling the operations and maintenance of the system, your water enterprise is under a lot of regulatory requirements, and there's new ones coming out as well. And so more staff's needed to help both of the operations and making sure you're, you know, meeting those regulatory monitoring and compliance. know, meeting those regulatory monitoring and compliance requirements. So what we've built in is five new positions. They're not all kicked in in the front. They're actually phased in over 10 years in an attempt to balance the staffing needs with the financial constraints of your water system. And finally, operating cost inflation. Your water system, just like every other business or enterprise out there, is facing, you know, annual cost increases, whether it's chemicals or utilities, costs along those natures. So every agency typically needs some sort of small annual rate increase in addition to everything else, just to tread water and keep the rates in line with the cost of service. So we developed some financial projections. Just to highlight a few key points, we built in those assumptions I just talked about a second ago from the last slide. We are doing some things that the city has built into cash flows to try to keep the rates to a minimum. One is assuming some future revenues coming from turnback water pool from the Naciviano Water Project. There's going to be hopefully some excess water produced by that project, and although it's not available to deliver now, the city's diligently working to gain some additional revenue streams for future water sales. So that's built in, about $1 million a year at the end of five years of new revenues coming in from that project. As Kirk mentioned also, there is a partial jawdown of fund reserves that's assumed, and that's because instead of doing all the rate increases upfront to achieve balanced budgets and fund your capital needs, the goal is to try to slowly phase those rate increases in over five years, and in order to, you know, meet your funding needs over that time, the city can contribute some of its fund reserves to still address its capital needs while the rates are being phased in, with the goal of at the end of five years, you're supporting balanced budgets with a prudent pay-as-you-go funding stream. This next slide here just summarizes the proposed rate increases. Overall rate increases recommended at 5% per year, each year for the next five years. This doesn't mean that everyone's customer's bills are going up exactly 5% due to some proposed modifications to the rate structure, so some customers may see their bills go up a little bit more, some less, and a lot of customers use different amounts of water each month, so they may see slightly different impacts depending on their own meter size and use. This slide here just shows kind of graphically what's going on with the expenses and the revenues. So the different color bars represent the expenses projected out over the next 10 years. For example, the blue section is the operating and maintenance expenses, which gradually increase over time. The green section shows the debt service, and that kicks in after a couple of years due to the new San Antonio spillway debt. The yellow section shows the rate payer portion of capital projects. That's with the rate support, and you can see that that yellow section in years two and three goes above the red line. That red line is the projected revenues, and what that means is your expenses are higher than the revenues those years, so that's why you're applying some fund reserves to help fund those projects in the near term to accomplish what you need to do while the rates are being phased in. And finally, the yellow, the orange section on top, that shows the capital improvements that are projected from new development, and new development is projected to pay its own way. There's no rate payer subsidization of growth. You have a substantial capital facility fee that you levy on new connections. I think it's about $19,000 per new connection. Unfortunately, that is a cost for new development, but the goal is to maintain that, you know, new development's going to fully fund its share of infrastructure and not put any burden on the rate payers. We talked about there's some issues with your rate structures, mainly the low level of fixed revenue recovery. Your current $10 per month fixed charge, it generates about 7.6% of total rate revenues, which is very low compared to industry norms, which are typically 20% to 40%. On the other side of the coin, you've got about 85% of your costs are fixed costs that don't change with water use. So what happens is when water use has to go down due to conservation or statewide mandated reductions in use, your revenues go down a lot, your expenses go down just a tiny bit, and it leads to revenue shortfalls. So what we're recommending is an increase in the fixed charge to improve the revenue stability, and also, as I mentioned, your fixed charges are not aligned with meter size or meter capacity. Everyone pays the same $10, whether it's a single-family home or whether it's a large commercial enterprise. So most agencies, as I've mentioned, pay fixed charges based on meter size and capacity with the goal being that the larger meters, who put more demand on the system, are paying a proportionate share of fixed costs. So those are, you know, kind of summarize what we're recommending. We're proposing the fixed charges phase in from the current level of $10 to $25, not all at once, but phased in over five years, so about a $3 increase per year on the fixed charge for the base meter size, and simultaneously phase in fixed charges proportionate to meter size for the larger meters over the next five years. And I know, you know, some folks say, hey, we don't want to pay more fixed charges, but I'll point out that even with these increases, your fixed charges are going to remain one of the lowest out there of the 18 agencies that were surveyed. And the other minor thing I just want to mention is that what we're also proposing is treating one-inch, single-family residential customers the same as 3/4-inch meter customers, and this is due to new plumbing requirements that have rolled out in, you know, recent years. A lot of new homes have to put fire sprinklers in, and even when folks do renovations on their home, sometimes there's a required meter upsizing to 1-inch for the fire sprinklers, even though the underlying demand is the same as all the other homes with 3/4-inch meters. So for consistency, and a lot of other agencies do this now as well, treat the 1-inch, single-family homes the same as 3/4 to make sure they're not overpaying. This chart here kind of highlights the fixed charge proposed for the next five years. Again, it's a five-year phase-in, but I'm showing, you know, on the green bars here are showing where your current charge is on the far left, the $10 is the lowest. Next year, you're still going to have the lowest, assuming the charges were to go to the proposed level of $13, and even if you continued phasing into the $25 level as being proposed, you'd still have one of the lowest charges out there on the fixed side. And I'll point out, this table's a little unfair comparison in how we're comparing to the other agencies, because that $25 fixed charge of yours in five years is being compared against everyone else's rates from the current year. So other agencies also have rate increases. Some of them already on the books. They're in the middle of multi-year increases or they're planning increases, so we think your fixed charges are going to stay one of the lowest out there. This next table here, this shows the full schedule of rates that's going to be included in the Prop 218 notice sent out to all the rate payers and property owners. And also on the far left of the chart, I added in the number of accounts so you can get a sense of the number of folks who get impacted by each of those different fixed charges. So this incorporates everything I talked about. I'll mention that because we're putting a little more revenue recovery on the fixed charge side each year, it also reduces the level of rate increases on the usage side, so your usage charges are increasing, but just a little bit less on the fixed side. And again, as I mentioned before, you know, your charge is $6.56 per 100 cubic feet. That's about 88 cents per 100 gallons. At the end of the five years, we're looking at a charge that's 10 cents higher per 100 gallons, so the charge is still going to be less than a penny per gallon. This chart here shows billing impacts. A large majority of your customers are, you know, residential or commercial with 3/4-inch meters, so that's that yellow highlighted section at the top, and the orange bar there kind of highlights what the bills will look like on a monthly basis over the next five years with the proposed rates. So for example, the first year, you'd see a typical residential user, the bill's about $75 a month and change, going up a little over $4, and then be kind of similar impacts each of the next five years. We also show a couple of other impacts and some other meter sizes just for informational purposes, but I'll spare you. I won't go into all the numbers. And finally, we also wanted to show what the surveys look like with these proposed rates for next year if they were to go into effect. And you can see on this chart here shows, again, the low user, you know, where the current charge is, highlighted with the orange arrow, then what the proposed charge is for 2023 with the red arrow there. And again, as I mentioned, it's a little unfair, but we want to show the information. We know a lot of these other agencies are going to be increasing rates as well, so we expect your rates for, you know, most of your residential customers are going to remain in the lower to lower-middle range in future years. Here's again the same chart for typical user, and here's for, again, the higher user, 75% of the bills are up to this level. So where to from here? We're looking for direction to move forward with the Prop 218 rate increase process. What that entails is sending notices out by mail to all the property owners and rate payers, informing them of the proposed rates, and then you have to wait at least 45 days before you hold a public hearing, and because these are water and sewer rate increases, they're not subject to a vote, for example, like if someone was to get a new sales tax or something like that, because they're cost-of-service based, and you need to fund these to provide cost-of-service and meet, you know, state and federal regulations for providing water. But there is a separate process in place in lieu of that. It's called the majority protest process, and that is if more than 50% of the parcels submit written letters against the proposed rate increases, that would stop you from going forward. So there is a public process for, you know, trying to oppose this. It's rare these happen, but we know that nobody likes rate increases, so we do expect you're going to get, you know, a number of Prop 218 notices. Even if the rate increase was 1%, you'd probably get a number of them. So the goal is to get these out by the end of October, hold a public hearing on December 20th, at which that's the time council would be taking action on rates, and if they're approved, the first rate increase would be deferred till April 1st to give staff time to get everything in the system and set up, and then each future year, the rate increases would occur on January 1st when water use is low, which has been the city's historical practice. So thank you for letting me walk through all that. Oops, went a little too far. Turn it back over to council for questions, discussion.
Thank you. We start off with questions of our consultant and of staff. After that, we go to public comment. Following that, we'll have the council discussion and action. So questions of staff, consultant, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, so you're combining the fixed rate charges and the water rate charges every year to account for the 5% increase?
That is correct.
Okay. And are these, so you're just showing the methodology at this point, and tonight we're just reviewing your methodology, and then the action is to approve the plan and we move forward into the 218 process, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Strong. So thank you for the clarifications on the presentation. My question has to do with the proposed rate increases for stabilization of revenue and to help fund future infrastructure improvements. At 5%, that's modest considering how much needs to be done. What happens if inflation eats all of that up? What's the process if we come across something, we really need to do this, but we don't have the money? Do we go through this process again? Is there a limitation on how often this is done?
No, that's a good question, and when we do these projections, obviously, no one has a perfect crystal ball. So there have been some inflationary, you know, factors built in to these assumptions as well as a whole host of assumptions, but you never know. We never know what water use is going to be next year, for example, either. So the goal was to, you know, increase rates and increase revenue stability over time, and due to the prior actions of the City Council, which I mentioned, where, you know, strong financial management, you're starting from a pretty good place, so it's not like you're so far behind the eight ball that, you know, you're failing to operate your system in a prudent manner if things don't come in exactly as planned. But if revenues do come in lower, if other expenses come in higher, it squeezes out your capital program, and, you know, hopefully there'd be enough, but the plan, the hope is that you don't have to do anything over the next five years. There are some agencies that have gone out with five-year rate increases, then in year three, the state mandates that they have to do a new wastewater treatment process or do some water thing, so they're something they didn't know, so then they have to go out and do another Prop 218 again for any increase. So you always have the ability to go out with a Prop 218 process again for another increase, but the hope is you don't need to do that, and even if things don't come out exactly as planned, that these rate increases are going to, you know, prudently get you through the next five years, and then you reevaluate, see where you're at, and adjust course, and, you know, take action in the future. So if things worked out a little worse than anticipated, it just might mean you need a little more rate increases next time or vice versa. The hope is we don't have to do anything for five years after doing this.
Thank you. Councilman Strong, any questions?
Yes, most of my questions actually were answered in the presentation. It was very good. So we know that we have this debt service we have to pay for. We know that we don't, I guess we do say, did say we don't have a lack of water. We've got enough water, but, and that the state actually imposed the rationing. Question then is, why did the state do that when we've got plenty of water?
I don't think anyone has a good answer to that question, because water is local, and I work with a lot of agencies that don't have any issues with water supply, yet during the last drought, they were required to cut back and implement all sorts of measures, and that's happening again. You know, right now, we're in the, the state's required agencies to implement Stage II Water Shortage Contingency Plan. They're not fining you if you're not meeting this, you know, 20% cutback, but it's just the way the state operates sometimes, I guess, with these regulatory requirements. So the good news is you've done some great things with the Naciviano Water Project to, you know, better secure your water supply and not rely on an overdrafted groundwater basin, but maybe someone has a better answer for why the state requires, you know, this one-size-fits-all mandate, even though you've taken action to, you know, alleviate some of those issues.
Mr. Hammond?
Okay, then my final question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Fred.
Final question. Okay, my.
No, go ahead.
I'm trying to remember my final question was. I forgot, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, you think about it. John?
Okay, yeah, so that our fixed rates going from 10 to 25 over the five-year period, and council has the opportunity, if we don't want to or don't need to increase the 5% per year, we can still do that, right? We can not have to do that.
Yes, the rates set are a maximum level.
That's the max, right, that we can allow.
That's correct.
Per year in the five-year term. And again, we can only set this up for five years at a time, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we can't do it for a longer period, and that's what regulations say. My question also is on the NACI water and our treatment plant. Is that going to be kicking in? Where we have to go further than where we are right now in the use and expansion, or will it still in the next five years suffice as to what we're going to use for NACI water?
Yeah, forecasts for expansion of that treatment facility are way beyond the planning horizon for this study, so we're, it's probably 15 years out before we need to look at expanding that facility.
Great. So I have.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Mr. Strong, did you have another one?
No, actually, John asked the very question I was going to ask.
Very good, thank you.
I didn't have to remember it, thank you.
Thank you. In that case, we're going to open to the public. Anyone who'd like to speak, this is your opportunity. We invite you to come forward with your speaker information card, if you haven't turned that in already, and we give you three minutes. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, members of the council, members of the public, Michael Rivera. I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, this is an annoyance to some people and could mean paying one thing versus another to others, and it's necessary. The gentleman made a great presentation. It's understandable. You need to cover costs of capital improvements and maintain your water supply. That's understandable, but when you do this, you've got to, you know, people live in a bubble. They live in their world, but for people on fixed incomes or people that are just, you know, living from paycheck to paycheck, you have inflation, they go to the store, they go to the gasoline, to the gas station, they go buy their kids some clothes. Everything's more expensive, and then the annoyance is they're going to get a water increase, and it's really, it's, there's other ways I think you can do this, digging down to it. It might make some people a little bit crazy, especially if they're large water users, but we have to think about roadblocks, the people who live here, the people who pay the taxes and bear the burden of working, not the people who, it's not going to affect Linda and I. I mean, it's an annoyance, but it's not going to hurt us, but for some people, it will. I know what the average income people in this city is, hospitality workers, people who work in the winery industry, the list goes on and on, and when you're making these decisions, you should be very focused on those people, not the fact. not the fact that this is going to kind of be an annoyance, but to some people, it's going to affect their, their weekly, monthly ability to live. And so I would be very careful of that. If I were on the dais, I would be very careful of that. And I'd make it very clear to the large water users that they may have to increase the price of some of the products that they're selling. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dale Augustin, 5770, this is Serrano Way, Paso Robles. My early days of working, I worked for the gas company. And there's an inference about changing over to electronic metering, which PGE has already done, of course, and it's easy for them. And I'm a little bit skeptical of metering, period. And I'll tell you a story. When I worked for the gas company, they had a hundred-year policy that on these certain sound meters, unless the leak was on what they called an outlet tube, it would not register on the meter. And so I found one where a gardener cut the corner off of the meter, and it did affect the amount of gas that was being registered on that meter. So I put a tag on it and told the meter shop to test it. Well, they came back with a reply, for a hundred years, we know if it's not on the outlet tube, it doesn't register. So, you know me, I'm a resident skeptic and radical. The next one I found where a dog had used the meter as like a fire hydrant, boy, did it stink. I took it into the base, set it up, showed my boss how it does measure, even though it's not on the outlet tube. So I made enemies of the meter shop because they had to change all their policies after a hundred years. But I have since then been a little bit skeptical of meters, including changing to electronic metering. And it, it saves meter readers, have to go out and read them. I understand how that works. And there's an inference that they might be considering that as a part of the modifications that would be installed. So be very careful, because I can tell you, the public doesn't like change. The other thing that Mr., that Michael Rivera mentioned is, there was talk last time we had a rate increase about something about the low-income people. That minimum rate is going to hit the low-income people really bad. So think about some kind of adjustment for low-income people on, at least on the minimum, okay?
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I see no one rising. I see no one in line, online. I'm going to close the public comment session and bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, I'd like to address that comment that Dale mentioned about a possible reduction in fees for certain group of people. Christopher, maybe you can explain that, that we're not allowed or not able to do that?
That's correct. We can't do that with, with water fund revenue. Prop 218 prohibits the use of those, of any funds to subsidize, one user class to subsidize another user class. If the council so choose, it could be done with general fund reserves. But for the enterprise fund, Prop 218 prohibits that.
Thank you.
Other council questions or discussion? Mr. Gregory?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, if you would, wait just a second. I want to check in. Councilman Strong?
No, once again, Councilman Hammond brought up the very thing I was going to.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Gregory, back to you.
I move, we approve Resolution 22XX to formally receive the October 2022 water rate study by Bartle Wells and Associates and direct staff to commence the Proposition 218 notification, public hearing, and protest process for water rates for the next five years, and declare that a public hearing shall be held on December 20th, '22.
Second. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Hammond. There's no further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Bosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. With a follow-up comment, and I think it was said several times by several people, that we need to be very careful. And I think that in viewing our report tonight and looking at the way the rate structures have been set, that we have been very careful. The increases will be minimal, they are maximum, they don't have to be that much if we don't need it. It ensures that the investment that we've made in our water supply and distribution system to date is going to be secure in the future, and it still winds up being less than a penny a gallon, which I think is still a part of it.
That was my point. 98 cents at the end of the five-year term, still less than a penny per gallon to deliver potable water to your faucet.
Very good. Okay, we now return to our consent calendar. We have three items that were pulled. We'll start with item number 11, which is the receipt of the treasurer's report for July 2022. Mr. Cornell?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director. Tonight, before you, is the receipt of the treasurer's report for July of 2022. This report is a little bit different from previous reports. Very specifically, the city now follows Government Code Section 41004, which includes not only the long-term investments that the city invests in, but all funds that the city has on hand. The other change that is being made is previously, we did individual month of reports every quarter. Moving forward, we'll just do the month of reports as they become available. With that, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council questions? Mr. Strong?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll open public comment. This is your opportunity to speak. Excuse me, I'm getting worse. Welcome.
Yeah, hi. Jeff Carr, Paso Robles. Yeah, the California Government Code levies a number of requirements, specifically on the city treasurer. He mentions the 41001, but also there's six more up to 41007. And 41004 reads specifically, regularly, at least once each month, the city treasurer shall submit to the city clerk a written report and accounting of all receipts, dispersments, and fund balances. He shall file a copy with the legislative body. So for my, I mean, we don't have it up here to show, but when I looked at it, it looks like what he's doing is all the receipts go into a lump sum now, when he puts that up as the receipts, and we have the dispersments as a lump sum for things like the general fund type items. And, but I, maybe that's what's legally compliant, but is that, is that really helpful to, to most, to the city council or the public? I think it'd be much better to have a more detailed breakdown of those revenue sources and those dispersments, so we can see a little more clear what's going on. If I was to hire an accountant and ask the accountant for an accounting of all receipts, dispersments, and fund balances, I'd provide, then I'd provide my statements and receipts. I would not expect to just get back a lump sum like that. I'd get my categories set up, so I could do my budgeting and understand what's going on with my, my budget. I've seen treasury reports from homeowners associations that do those types of detail. And of course, my personal finances are at that detail. And if one searches city treasury reports from different cities across California, you'll, you will find a variety of responses for this 04 requirement. It's bizarre almost, but there's a report from Simi Valley that I, I actually showed this to Ryan, actually, and it was more closer to what I was looking for. And what they did is they just did an output of all their revenue from just a beauty software, which I assume, I believe, the city uses. And it shows very clearly, I can see things right here. I can see the vehicle code finds, I can see rents and leases, I can see taxes very clearly and on a monthly basis, and I can see the changes. Real categories that help illustrate the business of the city, but provide more useful information to the, to the council and to the public. And it's a standard input from the, standard output from the software. So it's easy to do, and it's to the point. We aren't searching through pages of text for the good stuff. I like to see, you know, from myself here with Paso, I like to see the latest changes in the waste management franchise fee revenue, as I understand, since we've changed that and, and now we're not getting that, I like to see how that affects things. I like to see how the recent raise in the tipping fees is coming in and how that's offsetting that loss of franchise fee. I like to be able to see the revenue and spending of downtown parking system. As a member of the public, that's very to do, easy to do, if I had something as detailed as what Simi Valley does. So I, so with my desire, the city treasurer would modify his new 04 compliant treasury report to something more detailed and useful, then the council and the public can see changes in important revenue and expenditure categories on a monthly basis, as well as become more familiar with the city's financial structure.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, one, one more point. I didn't understand, you kind of dropped off at the end of his last statement. I didn't understand what he said. But maybe it covered this question I had, is why are we getting a treasury report for July and it's as late as October right now?
We'll find out. Thank you, sir.
Dale Augustin, I concur with the previous speaker. And Mr. Bosch knows from being on the school board, we could, we did get a report from the financial officer in this, of the school board, of the check register for everything that went in and out for the school board. And there's no reason the city can't do the same.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I see no one rising. I see no one online waiting to speak. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Mr. Cornell, would you like to comment on the degree of specificity of your reports and the scheduling, since we have a July report tonight?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. The treasurer's report that's presented meets the government code section, so that is the minimum that the staff report entails. As you're aware, though, every quarter, there is a citywide financial overview and report presented to the city council. I think that report is actually more appropriate for the information that Mr. Carr is seeking, not necessarily the treasurer's report. The treasurer's report is simply just the cash balances that the city holds at any given time. As far as timeline goes, typically, a bank reconciliation takes about four to six weeks after a month end close in order to be reconciled and completed. In addition to that, there's also two weeks or a week in advance noticing for city council agendas. And so just the combination of the, of the different things tends to be six, eight weeks to 12 weeks up to most, and I'm sometimes behind.
So if I understand what you're saying, the degree of specificity that Mr. Carr is requesting is available on a quarterly basis? And the reason for the delay in reporting the treasurer's report is in the reconciliation process?
That is correct. And I do also want to add and emphasize to, in the second year of the budget, we do have money programmed for a transparency software platform, which would be made available real-time to everybody in the community on the city's website, that will allow users to drill down into any sort of level of specificity that they show choose.
Excellent, thank you. Gentlemen, Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the receipt of the treasurer's report for July of 2022.
Second. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Bosh. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Yes, we're going to take just a five-minute break. We'll call the meeting back to order and proceed with the remainder of our consent agenda. Items number 16 and 17 have been pulled for separate consideration. Item number 16, second reading and adoption of ordinance 1126, amendment to the zoning code to allow commercial cannabis delivery services. Mr. Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Put a slide up real quick. There we go. You'll recall that your last meeting, you introduced for first reading, an amendment to the city's existing marijuana delivery ordinance that would change the definition to allow also commercial cannabis to be delivered by the existing delivery businesses that are located in town. to be delivered by the existing delivery businesses that are located in town. Those operate under CUPs. There's been no changes to the ordinance. So it's being submitted for second reading tonight.
Questions of staff?
I asked this be pulled because there were some, a lot of folks that had reached out. The consensus that I have come across in some previous meetings is that there is support for the existing medical marijuana delivery service. And we'd like to just see it stopped there. I'm in agreement with that.
So let's restrain your questions right now before we start solving problems. Any questions of staff? Mr. Strong?
No.
Any questions, Grace?
No.
Thank you. An open of the public. This is your opportunity to speak. We invite you to come forward for three minutes. Give us your name to begin, and we're happy to hear. Welcome.
It's a little cramped, but it's comfortable for us. Let me just make a point here. It's the reason for cynicism in government is this whole idea of the words, because words mean things, okay? So you have commercial cannabis, which is fine. However, it should be commercial slash recreational cannabis, so that the public understands what it is they're dealing with. Because that's a dodge. That's a language thing that average people may say, oh, commercial? Well, oh, commercial and recreational, or slash recreational. So I would encourage you from this day forward, maybe to be more transparent in how you use words, because words do mean things. Secondly, everybody knows how opposed I am to this whole marijuana commercial thing, which is actually recreational. Because we have not yet vetted or created an environment in this city with the school district to talk about the effects of these very powerful drugs on adolescent minds and even adult brains chemistry. We're seeing more and more effects of this showing up in our emergency rooms, and we have not even begun to approach that discussion. That's like, that's like going into something totally blind and not informing the public as to what the implications are of what it is we're doing. I mean, these powerful cannabis products, aka marijuana, are sometimes 45% to 90% THC. I've read and understand that these have significant impacts on people and their psychology. And for some, about 30%, 35% psychosis and schizophrenia. This isn't a game we're playing. These are very serious issues. And we have not even opened this up to a discussion in the public as to what it is, and educating the public as to what it is we're doing, because we're doing this. The fact that these products actually affect and have been shown to create homelessness, or people in homelessness because of the psychosis that they're undergoing, that they're becoming addicted to these very powerful cannabis products? We haven't even begun to speak about that. We haven't analyzed even our own homeless situation here to determine what it is those people have been using, whether it's meth, marijuana, whatever. But we haven't even done that. It's irresponsible. And like I said, it would be good if we began using language that everybody understands.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Dale Augustin again. I've been on both sides of this in one sense. I didn't even like the medical marijuana, but I saw how that is a valuable thing in helping some people. Even Fred Strong's wife benefits from that. But calling something commercial cannabis, it's really recreational cannabis is what it is. Let's call it like it is. And now, you want to be able to have somebody in the city just dial up a phone and have recreational marijuana delivered to their house? And you think that's not going to get down to the youth of our city? Oh, that's the same as saying that kids under 18 are not going to smoke. The more available it is of anything, the more likely it is it's going to get in the hands of teenagers. Now, smoking isn't quite as dangerous to kids as cannabis is. Cannabis stunts the growth of their mental capacity. My own son was engaging in cannabis in high school, and he almost was going to flunk out until I laid down the law with him and said, either you get your grades up, give up the cannabis and graduate, or I'm not going to wait till you graduate to come to Paso Robles. He did just that. And now, he's an avid memory of AA. He saved himself. Who's going to save the rest of these kids? They're going to have this so readily available because people can dial up and get it delivered to their house. And not just to their house. It's been admitted on the record in front of you. They can get it in a parking lot, delivered to a parking lot. We don't need that in Paso Robles. I'm sorry. And where's this location? Right next to the homeless shelter. Ah, no, no. We don't need deliveries in Paso Robles other than for medical purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Jeff Carr, Paso Robles. After the last council meeting, I went back and listened to the planning commission discussion on that. That was interesting. I'm glad I did, because they had a different tone of things. It's a little more aligned with mine. And I want to paraphrase some of the statements that I heard there, because they realized the process problem that they've been put in with this issue here on this ordinance. Some of the statements was, the city has asked the public opinion and then are not willing to hear what it is. The ordinance is out of sequence from the public outreach process. The city asks the public for opinions and are not polite enough to wait for it. So when this ordinance did pass, the planning commission, and two of those negative votes there specifically said it was because of the process or the lack of the process. And another, I believe, voted positive because he understood that the surveys would be available to the council when they finally made their decision, which they were not, and still aren't available. So I think it was a big problem here with the city sidestepping the public opinion process and the regulatory framework to go with this ordinance. I've been hearing a lot of comment, I mean, I think even from the companies, that there are up to 20 commercial cannabis delivery services doing business in Paso Robles, some as far away as Los Angeles. I mean, that's a lot. And I don't know how they can compete when they drive all the way from LA to Paso Robles, or even from Slope, with the time and transportation costs being so significant. So it implies to me that there's some illegal activity occurring that the city has no control over. And so that concerns me. And people can talk all day about keeping cannabis business facilities and storefronts a safe distance from children and schools and such, but it seems these delivery companies can deliver, with just a few exceptions, mostly anywhere they want to. I'm much more concerned about these roaming delivery services in the city than I am of a stationary storefront. So from what I see in these discussions, you know, more regulations are needed, but it's not clear that the city really understands the delivery situation right now, or that they have any control with it with their current organization, with their current ordinances, or if it can be enforced. There's much more work to do. The cannabis framework, cannabis regulatory framework was one of the better ideas to come from the city lately, though it was maybe a bit overdue. But let's get back with that and honor the city's commitment to the public and the public outreach process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I have a statement by Ron Cuff that he wanted to make.
Let me see if anyone else wants to speak first. Anyone else in the room like to speak? Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Yes, sir. The first caller is Sunny Mullenex.
Sunny, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and city council members. So I hate to repeat myself, but commercial cannabis, aka recreational cannabis, is less available to kids. I cannot emphasize strongly enough that you have to be 21 years old and with valid license to be able to purchase from a mobile, commercial, recreational cannabis delivery. And this is how we actually protect the kids, because right now, as medical cannabis, it is not what people think medical cannabis. There is no difference in the product between medical cannabis and adult-use, commercial cannabis, recreational cannabis, whatever you want to call it. And right now, at medical cannabis, an 18-year-old kid can dial up and secure a medical card for $49. Sometimes they're discounted to $29. And it's a rite of passage. They can buy cannabis, up to a half pound, if it's medical. And if it's just recreational, adult-use, commercial, they have to be 21 years old or older, and they can only buy an ounce. An ounce is like a baggie. A half pound is like a backpack, or half a backpack. And I also wanted to address some of the comments about delivering to a parking lot. When you have a legal license, state of California and city license, it is so incredibly costly to be operational. You protect that license by following the laws to the... The laws are black and white. You follow them to the T. It is 100% illegal to deliver to a parking lot. It is 100% illegal to deliver to a state or government-owned building. It is illegal to deliver to Echo Homeless Shelter. And there is not, there is 75% of the cannabis in the community and in the state is black market. The homeless people are not going to spend 40% in taxes, well, 36% to 38% in taxes, when they can get it black market. And they're probably buying other things other than cannabis. And when you're a cannabis delivery and you're licensed, you only sell cannabis, you are doing it, most of the people in Paso are doing it, the vendors that do sell cannabis are doing it for the right reason. I'm a stage four colon cancer survivor. I got into cannabis because it saved my life. And to hear people say these comments about that there's no medical value or it just should be medical, it's like, I just wish people would meet with me. I've offered to meet with people to talk about the laws. I can show them where it's written in the California state regulations. I can show them what the city regulations are. I am an open book. I can be reached on Facebook. I can be reached at Kinfolk. And I just would like people to understand what the laws and how protective and broad the laws are from the state and the city. And yes, we do have about 20 deliveries coming through Paso.
That's three minutes.
If you are delivering from an LA, okay, if you're delivering from LA, you are an illegal delivery. You can only have your drivers deliver within four hours of their four hours, because they can only, they have to start at the shop that they're licensed in, and they have to end there. And you couldn't afford to do that.
That's three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, council. Bye.
I have Ron Cuff online. Mr. Cuff, are you with us?
Yes.
Welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Martin and council members. There is zero evidence that cannabis cures cancer. Let's get that one straight. Tonight, I'm compelled to call upon the city council's better angels. Tonight, the council is or was prepared to vote into law the legal delivery of a neurotoxic addictive substance called cannabis. The proposal brought before council contains no limits on potency, inadequate warning labels, and most importantly, no way to ensure that extremely high potency edible candy-like products attractive to kids, and in some cases over 90% THC, do not end up being given or sold to people under age 21. Exactly who is going to monitor every single cannabis delivery to ensure that age compliance is done, tax compliance is done, product purity and accurate potency is disclosed? The answer is exactly no one. Cannabis, according to the Federal Drug Administration, is a Schedule I substance with no medicinal value and the potential for abuse. Cannabis has been scientifically proven to trigger psychosis and schizophrenia in people under the age of 25. Drug addiction, psychosis, and mental illness leads to physical harm, property crime, and is a precursor to homelessness, violence, and suicide. The almost daily reports of mass gun violence nationwide are not coincidental to the huge increase in high potency cannabis consumption by our nation's youth. National experts in addiction medicine, like Dr. Robert DuPont, who is on my board of directors, the first director of the National Institute of Drug Abuse and emergency medicine doctors in Colorado, have been sounding the alarm about today's high potency cannabis products. Further commercialization of an addictive psychoactive drug like cannabis sends our youth the message that cannabis is safe. Nothing could be further from the truth. Look up cannabis use disorder, cannabis-induced psychosis, and cannabis hyperemesis syndrome. Look up drug interactions for the pharmaceutical drugs derived from cannabis like Marinol, Sativex, and Epidiolebs before taking action tonight. Tonight's, or today's cannabis is not just hippie lettuce. It's a serious drug, and it demands that serious minds consider the unquantifiable and unintended human consequences. Just as decades of promotion of alcohol and nicotine use has proven, there will be vast negative public health and safety consequences for selling more cannabis, just to collect a few more tax dollars. What will it take for all of us to stand up to this addiction-for-profit industry and say that this is not what we want for Paso Robles? Confucius wisely cautioned us that to know what is right and not do it is the worst cowardice. Cannabis is not just a harmless natural pain reliever. Any product that falsely claims it can help reduce or cure every ailment from chronic pain, diabetes, cancer, depression, weak bones, glaucoma, anxiety, Alzheimer's disease, arthritis, PTSD, multiple sclerosis, Parkinson's disease, and insomnia is really just snake oil.
That's three minutes, sir.
Worth saddling our kids.
Sir, that's three minutes. Can you summarize, please?
Sacrificing our permissious unsurprising, and ultimately sacrificing our precious small-town atmosphere. I urge you in the strongest possible terms to vote no on retail cannabis delivery. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Do we have anybody else online?
Yes, sir. Looks like Linda Decker.
Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, great. Yes, I just wanted to call in in support of voting no on recreational cannabis. I think there's been a lot of interest in the tax revenue potential, but again, I think we need to focus on only the provision of medical. Marijuana is currently done and no need for expansion. And really, I would like to hear the results of the community survey, too. That's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling. Do we have anyone else online?
No, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to make, my name is Grace Holland. I'm the owner of Dubbs Green Garden. I just wanted to make a comment to clarify that recreational marijuana has been delivered to Paso Robles since 2019, when the Bureau of Cannabis Control started issuing licenses. So it's nothing new. All this is simply doing is asking to level the playing field for us, which we are only allowed to sell medically because we're based out of Paso. And it's just going to level the playing field to allow us to compete with all the out-of-town delivery services that are coming into town and taking business away from a local company. So that's what, I just wanted to make that clarification since there's a lot of confusion that this is something new that's going to happen. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? We have one person online, Grace Holland. Grace? Or is Grace with us tonight? Was that Grace? I'm sorry. I'm looking at my list here, and I'm looking at three places at once. I apologize. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'd just like to clarify one thing.
Please come to the microphone.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a clarification. So this is 16. We are also going to discuss 17.
This is Mr. Rivera. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is 16. We're also going to discuss 17.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Gentlemen? Mr. Boush?
I think there's a couple of good questions out there. I think there are some good comments I'd like to echo, the wisdom of waiting for the survey to come back. I think the survey is being processed. If maybe staff can let us know what the status is on that survey, when it's available, when it might be available, would be one of my questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, the survey... we do have the survey. The survey was initiated not for recreational or commercial delivery. It was specific to the framework for retail storefronts and was designed as such. So once we bring that item before the full council for discussion regarding the framework, that's when all the results of that will be released to the council and to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make my comments. Basically, it's... 16 is in regard to zoning change, you know, for the commercial deliveries, but also, I'm going to include 17 as well. I just want to plead one more time with my colleagues, you know, that the people that I am understanding you are believing is a majority of the people that want this to happen. I'm hearing from a completely different group, and I want to make sure you understand that there is another voice out there that you may not be hearing. And again, it's just one more step down the road. I mean, the medical marijuana, I've always had a problem with. I think it's important to be able to have those benefits to people who are ill and can benefit from the medical end of it. But going down this road, it's just pushing it further and further, where we're changing Paso Robles, I think, and again, many voters here in the wrong direction. So I would ask one more time that, you know, my colleagues kind of just... who have voted in previous sessions for this new regulation, that they reconsidered their position. And again, I think it's something that, again, I'm pretty passionate about, but then there's a lot more people, too, that have been contacting me even since. So I'm wishing, again, that you would reconsider at this point, but we'll see how the votes go.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah. I'm going to repeat what I said before in the last meeting. We have 20 different companies delivering commercial, recreational cannabis to our city. We have an operator in our city, or a couple operators in our city, who have the medical marijuana delivery service, and now they want to have the recreational and commercial. If we have our own people in our town delivering the service, we have a lot better control over outside forces coming into the city. We also capture the sales tax, and that's not so important to me as it is having the representation local. And who knows where these people are coming from? We all know there's a black market out there. We need to support our local businesses. And I'm not talking about brick and mortar. I'm talking about an existing marijuana delivery service that delivers medical marijuana, and in Sunny's case, she has a commercial and recreational in other areas, and she could deliver to us. It's important, I think, to have more control of your destiny in this. I am not going to disrespect or not listen to people's opinion on cannabis. I think this is more of a economic fairness issue, and that we have more control of our future in our city by having our delivery service locally do this. And capture the dollars, but you also have the control. And I'm still supportive of this. I'm not talking about brick and mortar. I'm just talking about delivery service and for fairness and also for control. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strong, any comments?
Sure, I'll make a few. I agree with what Mr. Gregory said, number one. Number two, we don't live in an isolated situation. This is reminiscent of so many other things, and I would... as I stated before, the prohibition era showed us how illegal activity is more harmful than legalizing something and then controlling it. And even with the controls, you still can't override people's free will. And there are people out there who are going to make decisions that they don't care, that this is what they want to do, and they will find a way to do it. And we know that's already happening in our city, because it's coming in from all around our city, and it's being used in our city. So we have the problem. Question is, what's the best way to mitigate or control that? Many of the things that have been said on the negative side, I don't disagree with, but also, I think they were slightly overstated in some instances. You could say, we haven't heard almost nothing on the positive side, except for those who are opposed to deny that there is a positive side, or that's... and I know that it's not fake, not in certain specific instances, at least, that I'm acquainted with. But that being said, almost the same arguments, possibly at a slightly different level, could be made for the sale of alcohol, the sale of tobacco, the sale of many other things that are harmful to one or another type of individual because of their medical conditions or their personal makeup. We live in the United States of America, where individuals have certain freedoms, and they're going to exercise those freedoms, at least to the best of their ability, if they want to. And that means that we're going to have the problem one way or another. But by licensing it, we can control what that license actually allows people to do. And that gives us at least some legal grounds, then, to try to eliminate as much of the negative aspects of this state-allowed procedure that we can. And other states are starting to go the same route, and now they're talking in Congress about legalizing it nationwide. So this is just a change in the nature of our entire society, and let's do what we can to control it, but we can't do it by ignoring it or just saying, "Not here," because our saying "not here" isn't going to achieve "not here." And that's why I'm going to support this, and then we're going to look forward to what kind of controls we can bring in, and the follow-up resolutions that would be having come down the pipe currently, and that then our survey and our public is going to be able to comment further and give our opinion. We do want to listen to the public. We want to hear the whole public, not just a certain select group. So that's where I'm standing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boush?
So I'm glad Councilmember Gregory and Strong brought up the control issue. Illegal marijuana is way beyond anybody's control. I see absolutely no basis in saying, "We grant a CUP, we grant a business license," that it's going to do any kind of license to give us more control over a bad situation. That's just a... there is no basis in that. You look at the other cities that have legalized cannabis, whether retail or medical, the reports or the crime has increased. It has decimated the small-business person, both if they are grow, if they are a retail I don't see this helping the very people that we want to see succeed in medical. If we wanted to succeed, and we'll come back to this issue, I guess, in a little bit, if we wanted the local people who are distributing now, we should have changed the ordinance to protect them and limit it to the two people that are already doing so. We could have done that. I think that ship has sailed, and I think that's a tragedy. At this point, the way it's written, I can't support this. If I thought there was a chance of passing, I would ask that the council consider tabling this until the survey comes out, because I think it would be instructive, whether it's retail storefront or retail delivery. I think it would be very illustrative of what the will of Paso Robles would be. I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think the will of the board or the city council supports that. I'm saddened by that. I don't think making a license is going to eliminate illegal sales. If that was the case, we would have already eliminated illegal sales of cannabis a long time ago, and that's proven to be beyond our reach.
Thank you. So before I weigh in, question to the city attorney. If we want to change the verbiage on this tonight to "commercial slash recreational," can we do that without going through a full recycle?
Yeah, I think you can. You're not actually changing the intent or any of the actual regulations. It would just be clarifying.
So I'm going to make comments that I've made before.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
Just by way of some context, the current ordinance is crafted to reflect similarities with state law, so that's the reason why those are there. So it's not to be unclear about that, but that's the reason why the wording is there, is to mirror what is happening at the state level.
Mr. Lewis is correct. The terminology "commercial" is consistent both with state law and industry practice, which is why it was selected.
But for transparency, we could add the word "recreational" and not affect the action we take.
We could put it in parentheses next to it, if that would make it feel better.
Thank you. So I'm going to say a few things I've said before, so those of you who have heard it can take a break. I've never used cannabis. When the issue came before the people of the state of California on Prop 64, I was not in favor of legalizing recreational marijuana. The people of the state of California disagreed with me. The people of San Luis Obispo County disagreed with me. 62% of the voters in the city of Paso Robles disagreed with me and voted to legalize the recreational use of marijuana. Now, that doesn't mean we have to have marijuana, we have to have delivery services or storefronts, but I'm just saying that when it comes to trying to represent what our citizens want, that's the data I have in front of me. I find it extremely hypocritical when I go out as the mayor of the city of Paso Robles to promote our community as being the wine capital of California. We're known around the world for our alcohol, and we all know that when you abuse alcohol, you have psychosis, you ruin your liver, you develop cancer. So it's very hard for me with a straight face to say that I'm going to promote a potentially addictive and dangerous substance on one hand, but restrict a potentially addictive and dangerous substance on the other, especially when the population has voted to approve I hear from my colleagues here that they've heard from their constituents, and I don't deny that, I don't challenge that. I've heard from different constituents, some opposed, some in favor. I don't get the same monolithic message as some of my colleagues do, so it leads me to believe that different people are talking to different council people, as they should, and we're trying to gauge from the input that we get from our public, what is the right thing to do. We have more data from two different sources. One is our own consultant, who has dealt with cannabis issues in other communities, who reports that in the communities they've worked in, that the legalization of such services, number one, does not increase the crime rate, number two, does not devalue property values, and number three, does not increase the rate of incidence of young people involved in cannabis sales and abuse. Those stats also come from higher sources, as we just came from the League of California Cities and attended a workshop there, where essentially, they echoed the same comments. I agree that allowing delivery services in the city of Paso Robles will not significantly affect the black market. We're not going to get that under control, not this way, anyway. But I also believe that people who want to use a product that has been approved by the state of California for use, and they want to do it legitimately, and they want to do it safely, they want to do it from a trusted source, where they know that what they're getting is not tainted with a foreign substance. They want to know that it's taxed and regulated, and there's at least some supervision over the process. In echoing Mr. Gregory's comments, I believe the situation we find ourselves in right now is we are in a city where 20 services already deliver these products to our citizens, and yet, our local business people are not allowed to participate in that legal market, and that's not fair. There's a larger conversation coming our way, a much larger conversation, and that is the issue of whether or not brick-and-mortar cannabis stores will be allowed in the city of Paso Robles. That's not what we're talking about tonight. That will require a lot more public input, more surveys, more public workshops, more letters to the editor, more letters to the council, more public hearings, because every person up there believes in thoroughly vetting that issue and not galloping into it pell-mell. But it is a separate issue, and so tonight, for the reasons that I've stated, I have to support the actions before us. Gentlemen? Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to make a motion. We waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 1126 to repeal and replace Chapter 21.33 of the zoning code to allow commercial cannabis delivery services in the RSC and C3 zoning districts, and to make other clarifying amendments.
Is there a second?
And I'll admit, it includes the clarifying amendment that the mayor mentioned, who have the parentheses.
Including recreation, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Very good. I have a motion, and I have a second. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Boush?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes three to two. Item number 17, approval of a resolution establishing the number of permits authorized to operate commercial cannabis delivery service businesses within the city. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So as councils were well aware through this previous discussion, that this is a sister component to the council's direction to modify the municipal code to allow for commercial or recreational cannabis. At your last council meeting, on a 3-2 vote, you directed staff to move forward with the ordinance and craft a resolution identifying a cap of four businesses to operate within the city. It's important to note and distinguish that this is a temporary authorization for the existing businesses that have conditional use permits in place, and the ordinance is attached to their staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Mr. Strong, any questions? Thank you. A lawful public comment. This is your opportunity to speak. We welcome you to the microphone.
Michael Rivera, you know, we have two vetted, responsible medical marijuana delivery services. Why we're scaling this to four is beyond me. And by the way, I've heard a number of times now that there are a number of outside vendors coming into the city of Paso Robles to deliver recreational marijuana here. My question is, either directed to the mayor or to the city manager, are we collecting the tax for that? Because these are highly regulated delivery services. So if they're coming here and they're delivering their product here now, they should be keeping very good records of what they're doing, and we should be able to request those and ask, "Why haven't they been paying the tax to this city?" Because in my mind, that's a very underhanded way to do business, and it becomes problematic. The two services that we currently have that have been delivering medical marijuana have obviously had good track records, and they're people of integrity, from what I understand, from what I've studied, okay? Because I have done my homework. However, what we have now is we have people who have been doing this for quite some time with indoor city limits, and we haven't gotten one dime from those delivery services. My suggestion is, we cast a net, we find out in Mall Bay and in Grover Beach... My suggestion is, we cast a net, we find out in Mall Bay and in Grover Beach if they have been delivering into the city, and we find out how much, and we collect the money that they owe us. So with that being said, that was my point.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, Jeff Carr, Paso Robles. Yeah, I have to just talk again on this. I guess probably this is a done deal, but because there's so much weird information coming on in this, because I'm one of the guys, I'm not even necessarily against cannabis, and I've used cannabis, and I've been to the storefronts, and I voted for it to be legalized. But when I watch the way Paso Robles handles this process, I'm just, I don't understand it. It's just so disrespectful to the public and just process in general. I mean, I hear some strange, you talk about leveling the playing field. You're not leveling any playing field. These people were in medical marijuana. They are not competing against commercial marijuana. So you're trying to say that they're taking away our business? No, you're in the medical marijuana business, not the commercial marijuana business. What they want to do is expand, and that's great. I mean, that's if that's what they want to do. But I don't agree with the city bypassing public input and, you know, basically snubbing the public and going around this, the regulatory process to let it happen. It's just not right. And this one, I mean, this kind of just follows through, this is just an adjoining thing. So again, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to the city, I think. It was embarrassing, you could see that in the planning commission, they were kind of upset about it, uncomfortable with it. It's just bad government. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello. The comment that he made that...
Name, please.
Oh, Grace Hall. Me being medical only and our business only being allowed to sell medically, being medical is like a dinosaur in the industry. So what happens is when somebody wants to make a delivery for marijuana, they can choose to pay upwards of $150 for a doctor's recommendation, or they can just call a recreational service. So that's where the problem arises. What, what Prop 64 was supposed to be when it came to medical and recreational marijuana is not what it ended up turning out to be. And our business is pretty much obsolete now, now with the influx of everybody being recreational. So there was a time when we were first licensed, we're licensed number 16 in the state of California, so there was very few people that were licensed. But then as they started, other jurisdictions would license people, it would be for recreational, not for medical. So slowly, over the years, has basically put us out of business. So just for some clarification, that's what I just wanted to say.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I have, I have a couple of people waiting online. First, we have Linda Becker. Linda, are you with us?
Hello, this is Linda. Just a couple of points I want to make. I really don't understand why we are not collecting taxes for those who deliver in our area. I'm thinking, when I go online and order products, you know, my taxes for the order are put into play. So there's probably some revenue source for our city there. I do not understand why we need to expand from two medical marijuana services beyond that, unless there is some great interest, again, in trying to find a source of revenue for the city. But I, I really don't understand the need for that. And again, I would emphasize that we really need to see the results of our community survey. What's the rush? That's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sonny Mullenax. Sonny, you're with us?
I wanted to address one of, oh, I am. Good evening, Mayor Martin and City Council. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay. I just want to address one of the comments about delivering from Grover Beach. Yes, we, I am partners in a shop in Grover Beach, Urban Leaf, and we actually, we opened up delivery in Grover, maybe about a year after we opened, during COVID, we actually initiated it. And it was, it did not pencil out to drive from Grover Beach, to have drivers that drove from Grover Beach up to Paso, you know, Paso being my hometown. Definitely wanted to see that success be a success and get a license for, in the community for that, but it just didn't pencil out. And so we actually limit our, our drivers to the city of San Luis Obispo, and most of our, most of our deliveries are within a 10-mile radius through Pismo and Enorar Grande and Oceano. But I also wanted to talk about that we, Kinfolk, we are under construction, we went through, we've been going through the process with the community for a year, actually since last November. And we'd like the council to respect that we have been really good citizens within the community. We have the experience, and we have a, a track record that we're 100% compliant. We've had amazing success with our security measures, and we understand the business, and we cater to those that have medical issues and, you know, females and every, you know, the ones that are going through sleeping issues or menopause, we have solutions that can aid their recovery. So that's, thank you, council, for listening, and I appreciate your consideration for minimally allowing three mobile deliveries, if not four. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next, we have Patrick Shannon. Patrick, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor Martin and, and council. My name is Patrick Shannon. I am also, I'm partner with Kinfolk Callistics, and, you know, I just wanted to call in and also, you know, echo what, what Mayor Martin said earlier, and, you know, I'll just say, you know, that I, I am, I am for, you know, having, having more, more deliveries in, in the area, and I am also, I also think that we, we really do need to give, we need to give our, you know, give, give the business owners of, of Paso Robles, you know, at least a level playing field with, with, you know, the other delivery companies that are coming in. And, you know, I think, I think that's, that's about it. That's all I got to say tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? I have no one waiting online. Want to close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Mr. Gregory?
Ty, would you clarify the licenses? How many are existing and what we're asking for?
Yeah, I understand the confusion with the, with the public and with this. So there are currently two operating businesses in town that, both of them are operating dubs, and they have another business that's sharing, co-sharing a space with them. And they have a conditional use permit that permits up to three businesses within that location that could operate out of there. There are two existing in operation. The other business is Kinfolk, which is Sonny Mullenax's and Patrick's business. They are not operational yet, but have a significant investment in a business. They have a conditional use permit that's been approved by the planning commission and are expected to be operational soon. So based upon council's direction at the last staff meet, or excuse me, city council meeting, that was where the number four, I believe, came from, was that there are four businesses that are capable of operating based upon existing conditional use permits at this time.
Thank you. Can you, or someone, comment on the status of sales tax collection on remote delivery services?
Sure, I'll take my best stab, and then I'm sure the city attorney can augment it. So I don't disagree with the notion that there are businesses that are delivering commercial slash recreational cannabis to Paso Robles. Collecting that is difficult, not because we don't know, we couldn't determine how many deliveries are made here, but their businesses are located in other communities that also have regulations, municipal codes that impose a tax. So those organizations, those businesses will be remitting their tax to their home community, much like internet sales tax or other taxes that are going on throughout the state that are also very much in dispute. Everybody would like to be able to capture the revenue that's generated from their community, but due to the nature of the business being located in other communities, crossing municipal and county borders, often makes that money difficult and very expensive to collect. So it ends up being a matter of where we want to direct resources, whether we want to issue citations for not having a business license within the city, which is an infraction, which results in a very minor payment, which I think they would be glad to pay. I don't think we're gonna get much cooperation from our sister jurisdictions who are collecting the tax on that, and I don't see them being very willing to share that money. So from a purely business standpoint, it makes very much sense that if the council is inclined, as they've indicated through their actions so far this evening, to authorize a recreational slash commercial cannabis, that the city would be in a far better position to collect that revenue from our local businesses.
So am I correct, if I order a pair of shoes from a store in San Luis Obispo and have them delivered here, San Luis Obispo gets the sales tax?
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Ty, maybe expand on a little bit. Because recreational is not medical, and it's, it's knowledge of who's using it is not private, I guess, you know, if yours was a medical. Don't these other companies have to report their sales and where they went to? Is there some, something in the regulations that they have to divulge where the material was delivered to?
That's correct. So on both sides of it, whether it's recreational or medicinal, there are tracking requirements that are imposed at the state level for any of the delivery services.
And are those records available to companies that can track down where these companies are delivering, obviously, like we do the short-term rentals?
So not without an audit. So most likely, what would be, we would have to have them compel, compel them some, through some sort of legal process, which would likely involve some sort of assertion that they are delivering within the city and withholding tax revenue that's due to the city, and then it would become a source of litigation, much like, again, the internet tax that we're talking about for companies such as Amazon and others that have fulfillment centers versus distribution centers versus warehouses. It all becomes a matter of semantics and gets very expensive to try and collect.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
So this is a question for the city attorney. Should we, when we finish voting on this one issue, should we, can we direct staff to bring that issue back about requiring business licenses and seeing if there's any way to capture the sales tax?
So your new ordinance does require a business license. The debate becomes, as Mr. Lewis discussed, it's really who's entitled to the tax, the city where it's sold or the city where it's delivered. And so if you were to attempt to tax someone who's delivering here, they choose not to pay their tax in San Luis Obispo, wherever they, they were paying their tax, you end up in a dispute over who's rightfully entitled, similar to, as he said, the internet sales or the sales tax around operations centers. You can certainly direct us to come back and, and present to you on that and sort of all of the issues around it. And I, I don't know if we're addressing that in the regulatory framework discussion that you've been having, but I, I think at that time, if we could certainly bring some, back some information on it.
At least requiring a business license would be a start.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Bousch?
So I think that's a great way to proceed. Requiring a business license, and I think there's a move afoot for cities that are in similar situations, that tax or tack on an additional tax for the delivery from outside city boundaries. So we could capture that in the process of granting a sales license for non-local companies. If they want to pay their tax to their municipality where they are domiciled, that's fine. If they're gonna get a business license here, they need to pay us as well. And I think, City Manager Lewis is absolutely right, it's a question of do we want to enforce that? And that becomes an expensive proposition.
I can expand upon that, too. There's, we can definitely compel them and through an ordinance to get a license, and that's what we're doing here. However, should they choose not to, what are the repercussions for it? And it's, quite frankly, it's an infraction. It's a, it's not a very expensive ticket.
And again, the, the issue of, and Fred, I know you're listening, I'm gonna get to you, the issue of where sales tax winds up, whether it's in the place that the product was purchased or where it was delivered, is a larger issue that addresses not just cannabis sales, but products across the board, and that has yet to be settled, as far as I know.
So if you take, for instance, warehousing, so Amazon warehouse gets built, the question is, do they get the sales tax? So there's one in, say, the city of Fresno, recently opened and built an Amazon facility. They are collecting the sales tax. All of those products are being delivered around the state. There is an argument that the city where the package is delivered should be entitled to that sales tax. There are the city who's got the truck coming through and, you know, incurring the costs associated with that. There is much litigation around this. The city of Shafter has recently been in litigation, Fontana, Ontario, so there is much litigation around this. It is not a settled matter. And the legislature continually is monkeying with those rules as it relates specifically to warehouses in an effort to try and resolve some of these issues.
So revenue reporting aside, is it possible to collect the actual sales data so at least that we can see what the trends are in marketing cannabis products in the city of Paso Robles, the percentage that's generated locally versus remotely?
We would have to, most likely, from an operational standpoint, you would likely have to, it would be a large-scale initiative by the city to determine who's delivering, which there are sources. We have weed maps and other places that, you know, are, are online advertising, or I don't know what kind of term you want to use, but that would offer you the choice that's there. We could run some stings, and then on top of that, we would be able to determine whether or not, you know, at least at that point that they had delivered, and then it would again become a legal process to go back and compel them to open up their proprietary documents, tax records, to determine what taxes they potentially would owe to the city.
Same problem we have with any businesses delivering from outside of the city, as far as compelling them to show us their proprietary information.
That's correct. And then it would often probably involve hiring auditors to try and audit their books, do some sort of financial analysis to determine, you know, out of their, just, just by way of projection, I think that, you know, some of the local cannabis companies project between $2 and $4 million worth of sales. So you can do the math quickly to determine, you know, how many thousands of customers that would be, and then trying to, you know, work backwards. And then on top of that, then it would again be trying to compel them to pay it, because there's gonna be an argument, we've already paid it in our local community.
Councilman Strong, comments?
Yes, I've been dealing with that specific issue for probably going on three years now at the state level. And we have had national and state lawsuits, some of them settled, and there's a number of ways to do it. Not all warehouses get the sales tax. It has to have a fulfillment center in many cases attached to that warehouse. And in some cases, in fact, we have businesses in town right now where the sales tax is not coming to us, but the wholesale tax is going to someplace where there is a phone and one person involved answering that phone, theoretically being a business office for the collection of the money for that company. It's a real mess right now. Legally, the courts have come in on some things. The, the state is debating it, and they're, the legislature and committees, our League of Cities has been debating it at the state and the national level. You're opening a real can of worms. We, we had something similar to this in the vacation rental business, if you remember, just trying to find out who was renting homes to vacation rentals and then getting them to pay the tax. And it took us years to whittle that down to where we're probably getting most of it now. I still don't think we're getting all of it, but that, that's just another place where this, this kind of situation exists. So if you get on that road, I think you're, you're going to get into an extremely expensive situation that's gonna wipe out any revenue you're gonna get from what we're doing now, and dig into the general fund and start taking away some of our services in order to try to find all this out. I may be going a little too far on that, I'm not sure. I may be going a little too far on that, I'm not sure, but that is also a realistic possibility. So I'd be very careful before we go that route. Possibly we have to increase the fees on outside deliveries, but then the question is, we increase those fees, those are going to be passed on to our, our locals, and that will increase their costs. And we had some comments earlier tonight about, oh, you've got to find some way to relieve the poor, poor people because they need some of these things and, and you're taking your output gains out of, out of their price range. So you're depriving them. Well, there's always two sides to everything, and I think the way we're going right now, we're starting to go in a step-by-step process to realistically capture as much as we can while being equitable to as many people as we can and allowing people to exercise their rights under the Constitution of the United States and that of the state of California. And as far as the number of permits, which is what this is really about right now that we're discussing, we already have licensed the ability for four to exist, and that gives them a property right of sorts. So do we want to now take away property rights from people? If we take away property rights in one case, does that mean property rights no longer exist for anybody? So I think it's a slippery slope, and I think we, we've been very careful legally in how we proceed with it as proposed. That's why I'm going to support it as proposed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
I want to make a motion. I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 22XX, establishing the number of permits authorized to locate commercial cannabis delivery services within the city to three, not four, and acknowledge the three existing companies are temporarily authorized, utilizing the three permits authorized by this resolution.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. There's no further discussion? The motion by Councilman Gregory, second by myself. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Vouch?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Strong?
No. Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a, a motion.
Okay, motion failed.
The same motion, but the number being four, which is the number that we've already approved in our land use discussions.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Fails for lack of a second, is there another motion? If there's no further motion, uh...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, maybe from, from staff at this point. If we don't pass this, is it an unlimited number that we could have in the future?
City Attorney?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
The answer is yes.
And if, if we are going to open it up to as many as wanted to apply, I think that's really going down the wrong road from, from this. So I hope that somebody will reconsider doing it as, as written and recommended by staff.
City Attorney?
If I can clarify, the ordinance that you have approved, Section 2133080, currently provides that medical cannabis delivery services lawfully operating in the city pursuant to 2133040 shall be authorized to temporarily deliver commercial cannabis. So the intent of the resolution, as I understood it two weeks ago, was to make sure that we were limiting it just to the people who were going to be authorized by this temporary authorization. So they are, those four businesses are authorized under the, the current...
Okay, Fred, I would invite you to make your motion again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will again offer that motion to limit it to four.
Motion made, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Motion by Councilman Strong, second by myself. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Vouch?
No.
Councilmember Gregory?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
I have a question for the city attorney. The council, if it choo, so chooses to, to add additional licenses in the future, we could do that by resolution?
That is correct.
So if we just approve the three we have now, we could always come back and add additional if we need it?
Correct.
I'll make the motion again. Did you hear that, Fred?
I hate to take, I hate to take away one right we've already given.
We can come back and visit.
Yeah, I think our positions have stated. You want to make your motion again, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, so I'm going to repeat my motion to three licenses to deliver cannabis.
I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Strong, no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Vouch?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you very much. That completes our consent calendar. We move now to city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items to report, mostly updates. The city continues to work with Cal Poly on developing a professional services agreement to move forward with spaceport licensing. We're confident, based upon inquiries with Cal Poly Legal, that within the next few weeks, we should have a draft agreement for our city attorney to take a look and then bring forward to city council for consideration. We also are working diligently through our consultant on our economic development strategic planning efforts, reaching out to various groups and stakeholders to obtain as much input as we can to help formulate that plan. Also, there was a press release that, if it hasn't gone out, we'll be going out announcing a, a New Year's Eve celebration in City Park, which will be, city staff, Frida Berman and Sean Allenstein are working on putting together a outstanding free community event on New Year's Eve, which will include a live band, as well as fire dancers and food and other activities to coincide with the New York fall drop. So nobody has to wait until midnight in order to do that, but should be able to get a good night's rest after about nine o'clock if they so choose. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Council Business and Committee reports, Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will turn my camera back on, there you go. I did attend the Housing Authority meeting, and they are losing grant funding for new projects in the big cities, and it's mostly the state requirements lowering their scores for our area because of the methods that they are applying to granting out those money. And that, that's our low-income housing, which is a real shame, but because we're in a relative rural, semi-rural area, we can't show that we're reducing vehicle miles traveled or reducing air pollution as, as part of our applications, and that doesn't give us the bonus points we need. I also attended the Library Board, and they chose out the art for the library for 2023, and they're also announced that they're beginning the evaluation of the librarian candidates, and they should be moving in interviews probably the beginning of next month to get us a, a new full-time head librarian. And currently, I'm in a national conference of regional governments throughout the United States, and today heard from many officials of the federal government, including the regional director from the Economic Development Agency or Authority, and they have now started to not have to approve those grants, and there are $3.5 billion worth of them available, and they don't have to agree, they don't have to grant them from Washington DC. They're giving their regional directors the authority to allocate money out of that, that three, three and a half billion dollars, pardon me, or may, three, yeah, three and a half billion, that's available in their region. So we probably should get to know our regional rep very well in the near future if we want any of that economic development money. And also, ARPA, they said, is a really good funnel, and that they will be doing some granting, too. And, and again, that's, that's not national grants, that's going to be regional. So that was good news. They did note that the, the problems at the federal level in Congress are now filtering down to the local government, and at the local government, it seems that it's information silos that are driving the divisiveness at the local level, and it is driven from that, that national thing. And basically, it shows a lack of trust between people that are equals and in similar positions representing their constituents. And that's about all I've got to report yet, I've got more meetings tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Attended Pioneer Day, and I'd like to give a big shout out to the Pioneer Day Committee for another incredible event, and it was wonderful. It was nice. I don't think Mr. Starnetta was in it, were you, John? Okay.
Working.
He was working on the beans. Anyways, great event. I also attended the Housing Constraints Committee meeting, and I'd like to compliment Warren and his staff, they're working on a reduction of the zoning codes by about 50%. Sounds right? And then there's another item of the Housing Constraints Committee that we were discussing, and that was finishing up the Uptown Downtown rezoning of a couple of blocks that have been left out. I was on that original committee and years ago, and it was meant to be finished, and it hasn't been. We have the zoning code going through alleys, which I think is inappropriate, and the staff did a great job with the help of Larry Werner and Vince Vanderlip, creating a map of an area that we could put into the Uptown Downtown plan, and I believe simplify a lot of the zoning in that area. And, oh, I quite frankly would like to see that continue. It's a great valuable tool for the community, and it would simplify the zoning on our side. And I'm not a planner, but I was part of the process, and it's important to me as a city councilman to have that unification of the Uptown Downtown zoning that we were working on. So I'd like to see that continue, and hopefully have the support of other council people.
Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended only one county meeting that was in integrated waste management last week. Nothing to report greatly on that. Other than that, no, that's all I had since last meeting, so.
Thank you. Councilman Bock?
So still not quite as busy as, I don't have any committee assignments quite yet except for, for Main Street. Did attend the Safety Center Open House hosted by Chief Starnetta, that was amazing. Opened my eyes, I saw some very interesting photos of volunteers, Rick Minton, John Hammond, Solder, Etchavaria. You looked a lot different back then.
Yeah, I know. We all do.
The, attended Pioneer Day, amazing event, as always, great to see, it looks like attendance was up, so thank you for everybody that helped put that on, Mark Perry, Vince, and all the Pioneer Day Committee, thanks very much. The, attended a celebration of life for Aaron Hoag. He'll, he'll be missed, and I'll, I'll just be kind to the family and let it go at that, a great asset to the community. Main Street is going through a recertification process, or is about to embark on that, so one of their directors from corporate came into town last night. We gave her the tour, we took her to dinner, we had a great meeting with her this morning explaining how that accreditation process has changed from years past, and how we'll go through that again. Back to Pioneer Day, thanks to those who made the decision to vacate the, the parking enforcement for Pioneer Day. Talked about it to City Manager Lewis about asking council to go back and revisit that issue. If we can't relax those enforcements, at least for Pioneer Day, leave your pocketbook at home, but also consider for maybe other major holidays. And I, I think incorporated into that, I, there was a, a suggestion that, that I brought up at the candidate's forum that we had about relaxing code and parking enforcement from eight in the morning until 12:00. That would give locals a chance to come downtown shop, especially some of our elderly people, they'd be able to park in front of a shop without having to walk down to a kiosk. I just, if, if, at the will of the council, if we could put that on a future agenda item, that would be nice.
Yeah, I agree. I've already talked to Ty about bringing this back, get it, I had that we can discuss.
I agree also.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. So I, list of my activities, I, I was invited to speak on sound off on KPRL, attended the Economic Forecast Reception in Pismo Beach, put on by Reach. Economic Forecast, I believe, is coming up on the 4th of November. Always an interesting presentation since San Luis Obispo. Also attended the old-timers barbecue at the fairgrounds and really felt like an old-timer. Pioneer Day Parade, I rode with the police, which was a great, a great activity, and as I'm driving along on the parade, I'm thinking, when, when is the first time I ever actually set foot on Spring Street in Passerobles? And it was in grammar school, when I, when I marched in the Pioneer Day Parade in, in the band, following the horses. I remember that. Had a meeting with staff and representatives from Dawn Aerospace headquartered in New Zealand. They're the company that's interested in working with us on our spaceport out at the airport, so we have continued conversations going on with them. I attended the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Chamber of Commerce Mixer, Library Board of Trustees briefly. Mr. Strong was there also, and I was there to kind of back him up and check in. I attended a meeting with Ryan Cornell down in San Luis Obispo with other cities, and Senator John Laird, who spoke to us about the process that PG&E is going through to extend its license at Diablo Canyon. Also attended the Housing Constraints and Opportunities Meeting, attended the Fire Department Open House and Art in the Park over the weekend, celebrated with the Warbirds out at the airport, their 30th anniversary celebration, and a fundraiser for their proposed expansion out there. And I was also at the Main Street meeting today with Councilman Vouch to offer input and enter the discussion about the recertification of our Main Street program. So that is what I have been up to over the last couple of weeks. Upcoming events, Special City Council Meeting, Advisory Builder Interviews Wednesday, October 19th, 4:00 p.m. Development Review Committee, Monday, October 24th, 3:30 p.m. Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, October 25th, 6:30 p.m. Airport Committee Meeting, Thursday, October 27th, 6:30 p.m. Development Review Committee, Monday, October 31st, 3:30 p.m. And our next city council meeting, Tuesday, November 1st, at 6:30 p.m. Deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on November 1st is Wednesday, October 19th. There's no business, no further business from the council. I would solicit a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman, motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.